We'll call the meeting to order. This is the city council meeting that has been rescheduled for Tuesday, January 21st. Would you have a roll call, please, Ms. Julie?
Yes. Vice Mayor Watts?
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Ebel?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Here.
Councilman Reese?
Here.
City Attorney Moore?
Here.
Then we have consideration of the minutes that would be from the regularly scheduled meeting that we rescheduled. Could you read that, please, Julie? There's a copy in there from Thursday, January 7th.
Council meeting minutes from Thursday, January the 2nd. There was roll call. We had in attendance Councilman Ebel, Councilman Petty, Councilman Reese, City Attorney Moore. Absent was Vice Mayor Watts, Councilwoman Knappel, and Councilwoman Scott. Others in attendance were Pam Billington, Barbara Upchurch, Eddie West, Marcy Ackerman, Virginia Alexander, Beverly Lancaster, Sam Gray, Steve Key, Teresa Mofield, Brian Nixon, John Poole, Samantha Lee, Ramona Denny, John Kelly Lish, Stacy Fisher, Derrick Brooks, Leslie Fisher, Joe Hyatt, Brett Davis, and Roger Duke. Mayor Smith called the meeting to order. With only three members present, the city attorney declared there was not a quorum of members present as is necessary to conduct business. The mayor rescheduled the meeting for Tuesday, January 21st at 6:00 PM as a special call meeting. The meeting was then adjourned as required by the city charter at 6:08 PM.
Do I hear motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you, they're approved. We have consideration of bills over 2,000. Julie, could you?
In your packet, there's one to Harper Electric for 5,500, and there's also one for Attorney Todd Moore for 2,180.
Do I hear motion to accept those approvals?
Motion.
Second? Second? Any discussion on that?
Harper Electric's for the Heritage Museum.
Mm-hmm. They need the electric up to control system.
Get out and stand if we are past you on it.
Well, not exactly, because we kind of have pushed this down the road. He still has some things to finish there in one of the rooms, so what I said to him, please take off that amount and let's just go ahead with this amount. So that's, it's not actually overdue, because he was waiting till we decided what we were going to do with that other room.
Okay, no discussion.
That was an additional 500 that he took off. All right. All in favor, your approval?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, great. Do we have citizens' concerns about anything tonight? This is your time to, just in general, concerns you might have. Okay. Then we'll move on to the mayor's report. Just one thing I want to report before I do have a little quickie thing here to show you. On our planning commission, we have, of course, people rotate off each year, and new people rotate on. The person whose time was to rotate off was Rick Shelders, and rotating back on would be Carrie Lucas, Lucia? Carrie Lucia, excuse me. She's the one who actually designed these cards. She's on the Market Fest committee. She's a very talented young lady and really wants to serve, so she agreed to rotate on in place of Mr. Shelders. So just wanted to let you know that. Okay. Going to do a real quickie thing, because we had some supervisors' meetings recently where they kind of shared some of the things they've done this past year, which I think are pretty remarkable altogether, so we're just going to do, maybe, maybe we won't. Did that start?
Looks like it's on.
Okay. Maybe we won't. There you go. Okay. So just real quickly, we're just going to go through some of the highlights of things they've done and things that have happened in the city this year, just to help everybody kind of catch up on where we are. So, they did a very wonderful thing at the beginning of the year. All the supervisors came together and created what they call a mission statement. What do we want to say is our obligation here, and what are we going to try to do to make Carthage safe, healthy, beautiful, and financially solid. They created, we brought in some, a specialist who helped us create for the first time ever job descriptions. They never had them here in the city. The supervisors came up with those in each of their individual departments, and we approved them. All the employees signed these, first time ever that's been done. They created evaluation forms, again with an outside person helping us. That's never been done here before. We've already had self-evaluation for several of our departments. We had a classical respect in the workplace. It's another name for harassment training that we have to have. It was done by insurance carrier, and for the first time ever, 100% of the employees showed up for this, which is really, that's very impressive for them to all do that. We enhanced our security here with both the water plant and sewer plant. We've got new gates that we've added at both. Remote control, one of those is elected as a solar power at the water plant, which is really neat. They didn't have to run extra water lines. Here's our fire department, Mr. Joe, and our fire engine. They have trained, educated over 2,000 adults and students on fire safety, which is highly commendable. That's just unheard of. We met individual with all the employees, established open door communication, appointed new planning commission, all new members, and they're working to revive all of our planning and zoning, which is, again, hasn't been done in years here. Dr. Duke has been working tirelessly on that, and we thank him. The downtown building facade grant is moving forward. Eleven owners are participating. Nobles is the first to have a completed facade, and that's there, you've probably seen it. Great looking facade. Then we hosted the girls and boys state for mayor for the day. We hosted eighth grade grade students. This is a special class that go through. They learn about city government, they learn about all aspects of the county. Preschools, this was really fun. I think Chief Davis had a great time with this. They came through touring the city hall and fire department. Then we worked together with the neighborhoods. You remember the vultures, it's still ours. They're not as bad a problem, but we worked together with the wildlife resources, the county mayor, the landfill. Everybody came together, tried to figure out, what do we do to keep these vultures from being attracted to out there? Research ways to keep them from roosting, from firecrackers, you know, all kinds of stuff. That's kind of why they were scared of these things. They're not very friendly looking birds, but... Then we opened the city pool. Team effort of everybody, public works, the employees, office staff, and they had a record attendance, highest attendance they've had in years with the pool this time. Then we had the cats. We had a terrible problem in our city with feral cats, so we established what's called the Feral Cats Spray and Noodle Project. We got together with the Humane Society and also with the Joy Clinic in Lebanon. They had a grant to spray and neuter feral cats, and we got hooked up with them, and they did over 90 feral cats in this area around Carthage and the area around it. The public works did a wonderful thing. They put a new apartment picnic table at Spring Street Basketball Court. Unfortunately, some bands destroyed part of the picnic table, tore down a hoop, but our great public works guys went out there, repaired the picnic table, replaced the basketball court, hood, hood, that should be hoop, not hood, and they painted the trash can down there in this bright red to match it. And so it looks really great. If you go down there again, it's all back in pretty, should be. We got together with the Chamber of Commerce, had two free Ball State workshops for computers for citizens of Smith County. There are plans in the work. We have a planning stakeholders meeting coming up soon to either offer classes starting in the summer or the fall, but it's moving ahead. It's going to happen here, which is a wonderful thing for the kids and people coming back to study again. Town hall meetings, and then we've reestablished citizens' concerns, so citizens have two different opportunities at least to make their voices heard here. Then we did the first ever Market Fest. A lot of you were involved in that, and we appreciate it. Twenty-one vendors for food trucks. And we're having the next one April 4th, Saturday, April 4th. So please put that on your calendars. We're going to have, hope to have an even bigger event this time. Then I attended a two-day conference with the mayors from the cities and counties, and got a lot of good ideas shared to try to help to improve some of our stuff here. This is our hard-working public work guys, again, out fixing our, we went all around town, and they, I think it was, was it 12 areas that we all designated to do repairs all over town? So if you look at our sidewalks now, they're much nicer than they were before, and we thank them for that. We have a new security system here at city hall that takes care of the police, us, and public works, because we don't want what happened to the county that ransomware gets in here. So we had that put in, and we now have added firewall every time of protection for, to keep our citizens' information safe. This was something that was really great, the lesson the guys came up. Remember when we had that big flood last year? They came out in the middle of the night and saved Safeway grocery store from actually being flooded. It was all the way up, if you could see this, it was all the way up to their loading dock there. And I thought Les was going to just swim out to the middle of it, until they found where that grid was. We almost tied a rope running, but these guys were out in the middle of a storm doing exactly what they do so well. Then, we won a spot on both TDEC's revolving stake fund along its priority list, or both our sewer and water, which is really great, because now we're set up, if we want to go ahead with this, to get really great principal forgiveness and low interest on things like our sewer system and the water line on Futural Alley. We'll talk about that a little bit more. With the sewer system, we are in line, if we wanted to get a grant for a citywide planning and design loan, and we'll talk about this in a minute, but it would be 100% principal forgiveness, which is unheard of. But that would give us, for the first time, a chance to do an overall plan of the city sewer system. How do we fix those lines so this eye-to-eye infiltration is the worst thing we have, and it would help out a lot in the sewer plant. Then we had two gentlemen that got awards. You've seen Officer Teasley, who'd won the National Traffic Stop Award, this is a state award. Brandon McAllen was the firefighter of the year. And then we had Tanya Tucker, Candy, Brandy Carlisle. Her song that she did here is now four Grammys. Quite a great PR for our little town. If any of you saw the Sunday morning show, she was on there with interview, and you saw downtown Carthage. So that's just a quickie overview, just to let you know what's happening here. There's, we could go on for days for all the good stuff that our folks are doing. We had some of the best employees in the world here, I think, and go beyond, beyond you, if we knew what they do, we want to thank them all the time for it. We could have gone, we could have done a whole slideshow on just each of our departments and what they've done, but we want to thank all of them for that. So that's the end of my little thing. Attorney, do you have a report?
I don't have a formal report. I know we've got a few outstanding issues that are going to be discussed at the February meeting, but if you have any questions about anything, I'm glad to just answer.
Julie, do you have anything you want to report? Okay. Chief Hyatt, Chief Davis, excuse me, do you have a report?
I don't have anything to report. Right at this time, we did lose one officer recently to the county, and we are accepting applications at this time to replace that officer. We also did have compliance checks on last Friday with alcohol, by the way, and we didn't have a single place sell alcohol, so that's very good.
Two minors.
An improvement from what happened last time, so we all should be happy about that.
Very good. Yeah.
Can't think of anything else off the top of my head right now.
Okay. All right, thank you, Susan. Public Works, Mr. Les?
I have nothing. I made sure I got some questions.
Okay. Actually, sewer and water, Mr. Derrick, you're up.
I don't really have anything to report, other than we had a major water leak. Was losing over 200,000 gallons a day, and we finally hired a company to come in and help us find that leak, because it was, it went on for almost three weeks, so. We got that company in here, and they helped us locate it, and we got that repaired, and I think everything's coming back to normal now, so. Does y'all have any questions? I don't have any.
No, Ms. Teresa's happy about that, too. Thank you, thank you for that hard work. Ms. Teresa?
I just have a couple of minor things. We finished up our crypto-spiridium test on the river, and the reason I mention that, we've been doing it two years. It should drop my lab budget eight, $10,000 a year, because it's a very expensive test. If everything comes back okay, we just sent the last one in. And also, we had some wind damage back Saturday before last. We're working on some repairs with that, some roof damage and air conditioner and a few things like that. We're working on that, but nothing major.
Okay, thank you.
It has to cool down before it'll shut off, I think.
Okay, thank you. Sewer plant, Mr. Ricky?
We ain't got nothing at this time.
Okay.
Somebody will say something.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you for all the...
We're good for now.
Appreciate you, okay. Chief Hyatt, Fire Department, do you want to?
Yes, ma'am. You have my written report. There's a couple items on there, and I hope y'all will approve my expenditures for, which is maybe a bit out, but also we'd like you to know that we have some, a pretty severe oil leak on Angel Level. Hopefully you set a dress before the end of the week, hopefully tomorrow. And in the morning, still, we're not pumping out the grid, we have a company coming down Thursday night, but we're probably on break issues on it. But you're looking at 1982, 1985, that's what I'm looking at. Let's go, we're loving it.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Do we need to go ahead and make a motion to get these items for him?
Well, I think we'd have to do. Do you need, is it something, can we wait till the February? Is it something you need right now, chief? Well, I know your ladder's like you have to go ahead.
Well, turnout gear, I've got one new firefighter, can't do anything to get turnout gear, but another one I expect will work next week or the week after.
So...
There's that. As far as the washer extractor, we talked about that for about nine months.
I think we've, didn't we already approve that? I think we did.
It's budgeted.
Yeah.
I just don't have an approval from the council naturally.
Well, I mean, we budgeted it. Does someone on the council want to make the motion to go ahead and let him get the washer extractor?
Both items are budgeted, both of them.
So the washer extractor and which other?
And the personal protective equipment, turnout gear.
A motion that we go ahead and let, get those in. Second.
Okay, just so we know, and how much, do you know how much?
About 17. Eight, 8,552 for the turnout.
Okay.
9,684.69 for the washer.
Okay, so I kind of have a motion specifically for those amounts, and then if we...
The one says plus shipping, so it may be a little bit over that.
Yes, ma'am, but the helmets will be plus shipping. I have the other ones.
To that effect, whatever the amount is, plus whatever shipping. Okay. So just so we have it on the record. So could I make a motion? Somebody make a motion for each of those?
You've got a motion and a second.
Well, but we're going to get the specific amount, so that's on the...
I'll just amend my motion to have the specific amounts of 8,552.
That's correct. Now we've got a record of that.
9,684.69, plus shipping on the first amount.
Okay, so the motion's been made, amended. Let's vote on the amendment first, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? And then the motion with the amendment is basically just to pay those bills for that specific amount. Let Joe, Chief, go ahead. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Chief?
I'll go over and...
You're welcome. All righty. We have a question for Ms. Allison Fox, who's here from UCDB, to tell us a little bit about update.
Okay, I'm going to start with the Appalachian Regional Commission grant for the water tank. So the plans and specifications for that project have been approved by TDEC, not TDEC. Is it TDEC? Do you have it written with TDEC on it?
Is that correct?
Okay. So the project is ready for bid, but I believe you're working on a contract for the engineering services with water management systems. So that's in progress, as I understand, right? The engineering contract?
For the water tank, yes.
Is in progress. That's all I really have on that one. For the CDPG facade grant, I have an update, a brief update on each building, if you'd like me to run through that real quick. So 323 Main Street, the facade work is completed, the door work is under construction, and the project is moving along smoothly. I think that's the Hebert Building.
Hebert, that's the language it showed, yes.
Okay. 302 Main Street, Wilkerson Project. The contracts have been signed for Gene Reed Painting to complete this project. The work will begin as soon as the weather permits. 326 Main Street, Holloman Project. The bids have been received for the facade work. The recommendation for awards has been sent to the state office for review. 212 Main Street, the Beller Project. This bid was awarded to Garver Builders LLC to paint the building and replace the windows and doors. The pre-construction conference is scheduled for 3:00 PM on January 29th. 316 Main Street, Adair Project. The recommendation for award for the facade work has been sent into the state office for review. 318 Main Street, Help Center. The contract with Mr. Gihod to replace the front door was signed on December 19th, 2019, and work can begin upon contractor's discretion. 104 Main Street, Rivers Edge. The revised plans and specs were approved, and work on collecting bids will begin this week. This project will replace and repair the windows on the front of the building. And then awnings for, I'm not sure exactly what this means, 104, 212, 216, 310, are those addresses? Let's see. I'm sorry, I didn't write this report myself. The awning packets were sent to multiple contractors. The bids will be reviewed and sent into the state for approval this week. So those awnings, I guess, are still being, are being bid out. So that's all I have on the facade project. And then the other one is the TDEC recreational trails program grant for the walking trail at Carthage City Park. So the grant contract has been fully executed, and the grant contract period is December 15th, 2019, through December 14th, 2021, so that's fully executed now. The town of Carthage is in the process of executing subcontract for engineering services and grant administration. Engineering services is with Mid-Tenn Engineering, and Oprah Cumberland Development District is the grant administrator. So these subcontract will be completed, and then, I believe the council, we'll talk about that, about the council's approval on that. And then they'll be submitted to TDEC for approval before any work can actually begin on that project. And the town of Carthage is also working to secure the required grant signage to be posted at the project site. So there's some signage we have to post, and some of that's already been put up, and we're waiting on the fourth sign that should be coming in this week.
And our engineer for that project, Mr. White, and Hyatt is here. Do you have anything to add that we'd still have to sign, some contracts and stuff?
Yeah, so if we get a contract and the state, TDEC approves it, we'll start surveying the facade itself.
Okay, okay. Do y'all have any questions? One more thing, I did talk to Mr. Jones, Stephen Jones, Steve Jones, who's doing the water tank project, and he has gotten in touch finally with Mr. Warren to try to exchange that information, so he can start on the construction inside of it. So it's going from the design from Mr. Warren to the construction. Do you have anything else that you?
Not since that, yeah, just confirmed today with Mr. Warren's counsel, but they were reaching out to get those plans to him finally, but they were waiting till after TDEC gave approval, and they received the payments they received last week.
It's been a very slow process as this goes, but I think we're now getting close to being able to bid out for the construction of that. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, and the playground equipment, we know we didn't unfortunately get that, but...
Yeah, there was a, the Blue Cross Healthy Place Foundation, or Blue Cross Foundation did a Healthy Place Grant, and they only awarded two grants for playgrounds in the state out of 75 applications, so they have not yet announced actually who was awarded. But Carthage was not awarded, but they did say that it was a very strong application, and they may look at applying again in the August round, the next round of that grant.
Thank you. Did you hand me those two things? I didn't, I didn't, yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you, the, we're going to, unfinished business now, so thank you. Appreciate that.
Did you want me to talk about the CDPG, or how could I discuss that later?
Well, yes, that's probably a good idea. We don't have it on.
It is, like, there is an item...
Maybe I don't need to, but...
Under new business for...
That's right.
The CDPG, we can talk about it now or then.
Is there anything they have to take, we have to do approval, is that what you do? Yeah, tell us a little bit about that, anyway. We're going to talk about approval to, it's what, we had the public hearing last time that Virginia Alexander...
Yeah, I think Carthage is planning to apply for a community development block grant to purchase fire equipment. Is that correct? I don't have the details on...
I think that's what they're looking at.
So it's up to a $420,000 grant, and it's, I believe, a, I believe your local matches 16%. So it'll be 84% grant, 16% local match, and that application will be due by the end of February. So...
And Mr. Reese helping, is it, Mr. Reese?
Marcy Ackerman, our office, will be ultimately...
Okay.
Preparing the application.
Okay. And I think the discussion we had before was to try to help, there's different categories, but we, I think we're talking about the fire hall, and, or possibly if that doesn't work, fire equipment, I think is what the conversation was the last time we were talking about that.
We follow the 51 percentile?
Yes, you all qualify for low and moderate income through census data.
Okay.
Yep, so we don't have to do the surveys, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, under unfinished business, we have, remember last, a couple times ago, we talked about if we got an extension for that fire hall bay, we first have to have an engineer who can give us an estimate of what that would be. So two applicants sent in in response to RSP, or, RFQ, excuse me, RFQ, wasn't it? RFQ, excuse me. One was Mid-Tenn, which is Mr. White's company, and the other was James C. Haley. And I sent you an email saying these were here at the city hall, if you wanted to look at them. You can also go on the website, and they each have extensive information on their websites. The, we will have to vote on one of those tonight. Do you want to discuss this first and then make a nomination, or how would you like to handle that?
What were the costs as far as...
Well, there's no cost.
We're just selecting the engineer.
The engineer, he would then give us an estimate of what it would be.
Then, yeah, we'll have a contract, hopefully at the February meeting to go ahead.
Whoever you select would then, they give us the estimate, and then that's how we would send out for the construction. This is just to select which engineering firm you want, please. So, again, this is Mr. White's who's here, and then this is James C. Haley, who's a company out of Nashville. They're both online extensively, if you wanted to look at that, or if you want to look at this quickly while you're here, if you're wanting to do that, okay. They both seem to have quite a bit of experience building these kind of steel buildings. Which that would be.
But you're saying they have not submitted bids?
Well, no, this isn't for bid, it's just, just to select which engineer you would prefer to then oversee the project. And they would send out an RFP for bids for the construction company.
Has Chief Hyatt had a chance to look at these?
That would be fine, Steve. Well, we're talking about which engineer they would like to select to oversee if we do the extension of the fire hall. Right now, before we can even think about the extension, we just have to have an estimate of what it would cost, and so that's what we're, now we're looking at the engineers now, is one of them can give us an estimate of cost, and then we can go from there.
It would seem to me we didn't know what the profit rate is. That would be first time, and we don't know how much to be at.
Right, and when we get the engineer, that would be part of their process to kind of see. But we can't bid out or do anything unless there's an engineer overseeing it first. So that's...
Have you reviewed these?
I have not.
They, again, they're both online, if you had a chance to look at it, and they both have experience doing steel buildings like this.
Got a question for you.
You heard you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'll repeat your name one more time.
Evan.
Evan, Evan, as far as pricing goes compared to other engineering firms, where would you all put yourself as?
Cheaper than Nashville.
Cheaper than Nashville.
I mean, our overhead is, so.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as getting a price on the building, we do that all the time. We tell people what a building's going to cost without, for nothing. But if y'all are going to pursue it, you're going to have to have it designed and.
Yeah, as far as your fees go. Yeah, as far as your fees go, which is cheaper than Nashville.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a rule of thumb.
And actually, the R F Q is not about, again, it's about cost.
The one R F Qs are, you can't discuss price.
Can't discuss price.
But you're trying, you're trying to find the most qualified engineer for the project and then he is the one that bids out, he can tell you what we call it. It's kind of like.
It's professional services. Yeah, it's supposed to be based upon qualifications and not on price. If you don't do it, you'll get a letter from the State saying.
Gotcha.
All right, answer questions and read it. Probably don't read the whole thing thirty times.
No, no, I don't think so.
Buddy, go to sleep.
I was curious, you listed that you've done some jobs in Jackson County. What were you involved with in Jackson County?
In Jackson County, we're doing Jackson County U D, so our client is in Jackson County. So it's a utility district water, is what that's about. That's probably your, that's our current workflow is what you're reading there, so. Our past history on metal buildings, Fleetwood Homes in Laffette has done a big warehouse, they've done it. We've done a structural repair to the Red Bullin Springs Fire Hall, that was in there. And we've done several other footings. What it is, is these pre-engineered metal buildings. The manufacturer will give you, they designed the building, the shell itself, but then you still got to design the foundation, so that's what.
I assume they give you weight specs and things like that?
They give you the reactions, the load, you have to figure out how to hold it down, so. And the site work to get it ready and all the locations will be involved.
I've got a question for you. You said you did repairs to the Red Bullin Fire Hall?
Yes.
This other company built the Red Bullin Fire Hall?
They did.
Was there something up with that?
The columns was cracking.
Okay.
And the floor was, I ain't gonna say it was completely sinking, but it was, there was settlement issue.
Look, just not enough fill put in or something for it? It's kind of built on a?
Or correctly put in.
Okay.
But that was not a pre-engineered metal building?
Right, I noticed that was more like a block building.
It is a block.
Okay.
Just, just so you know, the R F Q went out to about ten different companies and a lot of them don't do any other buildings, so they declined.
That's what I was wondering if they did that one. Second job on that. Very good job, very quick. That was some of the projects. I got a nice one. Got both those and dots and ranks around time. Make out many, dear, great job. Wait on me, I'm sorry.
Has everybody had a chance to take a look? Do you, what would you like to, how would you like to approach this? Do you want to discuss it first, do you want to make a motion? How would you like? What do you suggest? Okay, but do you have a motion of one or the other of this, these people?
I would just, I mean, this is first time, you know, we wanted this to be able to select engineers for each project and, you know, they both seem very qualified. So I don't really have a bias other than the fact that the one gentleman showed up, the other company didn't. It was kind of where I'm at as far as it goes.
Well, and it repaired the other one.
Yeah, so, you know, as long as we're not, I'd just like to continue to do this process. We have something come up and I'm glad we're doing it, so, but, yeah.
I agree, I just want to make sure we don't get in a rut of choosing the same one.
Yeah.
No offense to you, Evan, I just.
So, so do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we go with Midten Engineering.
Okay, do I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have chosen to go with Midten, which is.
Get to work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would anticipate we'll have a contract at the February sixth meeting to formally authorize anybody to start it or. Or do y'all, does the council want a price on what you think the building's going to cost and have the bays?
We want.
Before we go with the other.
Yeah.
Now, if I understand correctly, your service will include finding where the line is to see what we can do.
Yes, I can locate that. That's what I'm saying, when I first come, y'all wanted to know how many bays and what it would cost. So I didn't know if you still want to take, because that's, we knew that all the time at, at no cost.
We need to know that, we also need to know how many we can have.
But that'll let you know then if you want to proceed with the design of actually building.
So I think we, we were talking about.
I'd much rather y'all know upfront what you're going to
Right.
Get into instead of say bid it out and then learn.
Now, when, when you're.
You will learn, but
Right.
At least you'll have an idea of what it ought to come in at.
But when you're finished, it'll be ready for us to pull trucks in, right?
We bid it out. The contractor will build it.
Well, whoever, whenever that's done, I mean, it'll be ready to pull trucks in and you'll oversee that and start finishing.
Yes, we will oversee it.
It's not a partial, it's a full.
Understanding, at the next meeting, you can bring us your guesstimate of what this might cost. And then they, the council can decide if they want to go forward then to formally try to do this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that right?
Chief, do you have anything down?
You want to get with me?
I will.
Inside, I'll be there tomorrow, probably Thursday, probably Friday.
Okay. I'll give it to you afterwards.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, and if I'm not speaking for everyone at a turn, I think we want Joe to be very happy with what's going on and he knows that better than anybody else, so.
Yes, he does.
I want you to get what you need, so.
Okay.
It will not be elaborate, we just need somewhere warm to hang.
Okay.
I understand.
So Chief and Mr. White will get together and you'll come up with a great game plan. Thank you. All right, the next item is a commercial trash bin and Councilman Reese was going to report them with the facade committee.
Okay, I went back and looked at my notes and we, I brought it up at the museum, the possible location to put it was in the museum parking lot. They didn't agree or needed to, because of the parking situation there. No further location was determined or suggested in that meeting. However, Mr. Left, which called me, I think it was one day last week, and he had some ideas, maybe some suggestions, I don't really need to say right now because he didn't really clarify it exactly. Maybe a possible location. I asked him to, if he could think of any other place to contact me as soon as possible. So he's on it, still working on that.
Okay.
Did we determine that City Hall parking lot over here is too far?
Well, I thought, less, thought there might be a problem with that because if we put a trash bin at City Hall, I think we, it said there might, probably a problem.
You got to keep it locked.
Yeah.
We'd already talked about keeping it locked. It would have to be, would not be for public use.
Yeah.
I mean, just for everyone.
John contacted me as well.
Yeah, we were thinking about something centrally located for both sides of the street.
Yeah, and that's the thing is, that's, that's kind of the hard part is, while that would help John and then all the buildings on that side, everyone else has to still cross the street from the other side. And so it's kind of a, it's kind of a tough, tough call. It is, it is, but it is an issue and it's just going to, it's just going to keep every time business moving and it's just going to get worse. It's going to be worse and.
Another thing is too, of the, the people at the church, they asked me, would they be charged for using this when they don't have any trash that much to carry off?
The, what I'm bringing up is, these businesses are already paying it, paying for it anyways in their water bill. They're, it's already, it's already in there. So it's not to charge more, seeing that they're also bringing in revenue from the city. You know, I just don't, I don't feel that's going to be, that's not going to drive where businesses come in.
Right, right.
Just admit, I don't think commercial does, that's different.
It is not put on their bill. If they choose to get the trash service, that's directly through T D S. We do not put that on commercial automatically.
So that is not automatically put on there?
So they wouldn't have to pay it.
So, yeah, then we would, if that's, if that's the case, yeah, we might want to, we might want to put it on there then, so.
Is it economically, is it economically feasible to do two sites?
I don't, I mean, honestly, I don't see why not. I would say, in my opinion though, just the main thing is keeping that lock and key and get that, you know, they can pass them out here. I think, I, I mean, you're looking at, they charge like eighty, I think they charge like ninety bucks for a Big Ben.
That's per month, isn't it?
Per month. You start splitting that down, you know, it goes, you know, you know, I don't know how we, we probably had to set a flat fee for it though.
A flat fee, but like a lawyer's office, you wouldn't have, you shred your stuff.
Yeah, they're not, they're just, that's mainly a paper trash, so they're not going to produce as much as say a restaurant. And Simon Shop might not produce one, one week and produce a ton another week, just depending on the, you know, it's just, it's going to, it's going to vary and then, you know, also putting in there probably future businesses might have to get bigger bins, things like that. But, you know, I, I think that it'd be good just to kind of put a number out there, you know.
I've asked this question before on the opposite side of the street, where Toolies is. Is there an entrance or a road behind there, a lane or alley or something in there?
Water street, snakes.
I know that we
I tried to figure it out.
We drag it all the way across the street or behind Toolies, that's where we have to go.
There's a lane that goes through Toolies, so.
It goes to the back of your.
I'm landlocked, I don't see anything.
But let's say where the dress shop was, is there where Maxwell's place?
Yeah, it goes all the way back to the back end of Toolies, but they have to get in and out.
No. No, because there's just a dead end alley by Maxwell's and, and your building. Yeah, Toolies goes all the way back, like all the way down and hits Midten and all that, so it's just a courtyard.
Well, do you want to do some more research and bring in what you find out next time?
Yes.
I would think it'd be feasible to do one at City Parking Lot and then one, we need to find another location on the other street.
I mean, the majority of all your trash is going to be on this side, not my side necessarily because like Jim and them have their own behind his restaurant.
Yeah, but Toolies and Midten's going to create quite a bit too, I would think.
Yeah.
But doesn't Midten have one? At the bottom?
I don't know if Midten has one, Ro House has one. I'm going to take a wild guess, D T Colas has one.
Okay, where is a?
They just bought it up.
There's this behind the building, behind it?
And it's already there.
And you got to remember too, when you put this into it, you're looking at charging people who don't have that access. So there are businesses that do have access to have their own bin.
But again, this, this is a totally separate thing, the, the commercial is not something the city takes care of. You, you go through the commercial company to get that.
Which is why we're talking about that right now, because the, what you're, what you're running into is you're having business and moving in and they have no place but their trash. They have no, they don't even have places in the alley to put a trash can for trash, so it's not, that's why we're trying to create a solution for them.
Yeah, but like my trash can's on the street.
Yeah.
You know, around the sidewalk along with candy bars.
Yeah.
And then.
You might want to talk to T D S just to see if they may have some possibilities since they're the ones who pick up commercial.
What, what, what we're saying is there's no place to, T D S can, we, T D, I mean, I, I, like for me personally, I do a trash can through T D S. I have to use somebody else's business to put my trash, does that make sense? So what we're talking about is for businesses, kind of like Matt was saying, like a business like where he's at, just businesses that are landlocked, businesses that don't have an alley way to put it, to put anything in. That's what we'd be looking at, so I don't think it'd be fair to businesses that do have spaces that are already doing their own trash to be charging them for that trash service, if that makes sense. It's just not.
Especially have a key fee for the dumpster.
Yeah, yeah. We want to make it, you know, proportionate to businesses that need it and businesses that don't.
So would you like the bill to research it some more and bring back information or how you want to handle that?
I'd like to see that with the idea of possibly doing two.
Yeah, with two, some sites.
Okay, then would you, would you get, and report back to us, please? All right, the next unfinished business is the use of Performance Hall area. We had talked a couple times back about allowing the Smith County Museum to talk to this also since they hadn't had an opportunity to. Is there someone here that would like to speak to them?
Yes.
You can use the podium if you like.
Thank y'all so much for putting us on the agenda tonight, but mainly thank you for the update, the updating and upgrading of the electrical in the Performance Hall. It is just, it's wonderful. The museum would like for the council to maybe consider, if you will, letting the museum use the Performance Hall as it is, just as it is, nothing more for y'all to do to it, just as we need it. We, every now and then, we have tour groups that come through and they request a place to eat lunch or something. Well, we could let them use the Performance Hall. We would also like to share the Performance Hall with the spot and let the spot use it when they need it and let us use it when we need it. Y'all wouldn't have to do another thing to it, just let us use it as it is. And that's what we are requesting right now tonight, if you would take that into consideration. And let, get back to us with maybe what you would like us to do as far as working up a, like a little agreement between the spot and the museum. So that's, that's what we, that's where we are right now. And if you have questions, I might can answer them, but Ms. Barbara Upchurch over there, she has been with the museum since the get-go, so she kind of knows what all has been put into the Performance Hall previously by the museum's money, so.
May I ask a question at this time?
Yes.
Might, might be for you and it might not be, might be for general discussion. If I understand, your request would be to, I understand that to occasionally use it and share it with the spot and that being said, we would essentially not be using it developing a Performance Hall.
Correct, we would just use it for our own personal benefits, not releasing it out to anybody or anything. You know, we wouldn't be doing any of that, just for our own. If we wanted to have a fundraiser, we could use the fundraiser as, the hall as it is because we have restrooms and we have a door that would provide two entrances and exits and we have our restrooms. Miss Goodapple has her restrooms when she would use it, that she could use. We, we wouldn't have to have an upgrade of restrooms or anything.
Just, just so we, would you be opposed though if the city needed to use it?
I mean. Oh, no, that, yeah, yeah, we just have to have a little calendar, I guess.
Or if we had an art festival or a music festival or something, that it could be equally shared, if this is what you're saying.
We're thinking it would just be ways that it could benefit the city in lots of ways, all of the, yeah.
Yeah.
And that would eliminate that fifty. And that would eliminate that fifty, seventy thousand for bathrooms, wouldn't it?
Yes.
If we had a certain number in, we still would have to have bathrooms of some kind. We'll have to figure out how that works.
I, I was, I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback off of what you talked about last time. What is y'all's opinion on, let's say we, um, the city sold or at a low price or however we wanna do it, but that building to the museum? And if, if the museum would be up for talking about discussion on, on taking that, taking that building on?
I guess our biggest issue would be the price.
But it would be something y'all would be interested in discussing?
It's a possibility. I would have to get back with my board members, you know, that's just something I guess we could discuss. But the price would be a big issue for us.
Absolutely.
Because we lost our county, we lost our money from the county, so we're, you know, down a third basically of what we had been taking in each year. So, yeah, we're, we're just, we're just kinda, you know, financially, you know, bound there. But, I mean, it's something we could, could discuss, but I guess you would have to give us an amount of what you would think it would be worth to you.
Maybe we can look into saying, you know, property values, get appraisals, things like that. And then, you know, obviously work from there, obviously, cause we've got a long-term relationship with, with the museum.
Well, we need to make sure too that we put, if, if we were to do that, to put, we could put in the deed of restrictions, say like the spot has to have their space and, and everything still kinda keep going.
They basically, yeah. They can work their deal with the spot kinda deal.
If the city is gonna sell any city property, can we specify or do we have to sell that to the highest? I mean, would we just have to bid it out? So that, can you just?
No, well, really unless there's something in the charter, generally cities can negotiate deals for real estate without putting that.
Right, yeah, we could just say, we wanna sell it for X amount and, but I wanna make sure.
I would just point out, we have seventy-six thousand dollars in it already as the museum.
Yeah, right. So you've already got money into it. Um, so that's, that's part of it, I can, you know, we can consider.
That's a, but that's a, we need to figure out what we can do about it for right now to get Barbara extra space and
Yeah.
And the rest of it's kind of a.
Yeah, and, and.
A long-term.
I just figured why she was in here, but I mean, we can make our short-term, you know, ideas tonight. Um, the other thing.
Can you, we had a justice, anything you have any thoughts about this or legal?
Listening in.
Um, the other concern I'd have on that is, um, if, if we were to go down that path would be the maintaining of the parking lot with the city though, cause that's one thing that the city really needs is the parking. I'd say that obviously, um, they'd be using it for a good amount of time, but, you know, us maintaining that, that part.
How about if we, again, we can kinda research the prices and whatever, see, come back and y'all can think about it and maybe come back next time and discuss this again.
What do y'all think about?
I think we have two very nice entities here that we need to keep intact and make them even better. And I think if the two of y'all kinda have a meeting of the minds of what y'all want to do, that we should strongly consider it.
I mean, have you talked to the museum, Barbara, about this, about the Performance Hall and?
Absolutely. We work well together. We're partners already, so it won't be a issue.
What they're saying right now?
Absolutely.
Cause right now the lease doesn't specify one place, one, uh, one or the other, it's just still kind of a gray area.
The lease just says that.
It's excluded from both of them.
Right, and so I mean, it's still city property technically, so I mean, it, it's kinda just like, and it always has been city.
But in agreement.
Time, it's always been city, you know, it's always been like gray area, you know, excluded, so.
Both entities really do bring a lot to the kind of carthage, I think.
So I don't know, do we need to?
Let me just raise one, cause maybe Dr. Duke can help us, but, but there are specifics. If you have a certain number in there, then you, we would have to have restrooms with ADA handicap.
Well, I think what she said is they have restrooms, they would just be opening their doors to allow them to move out.
I think it's more of a, yeah.
I think for, if you had a hundred people, for instance, in there.
Like from technical standards, even though, yeah, they, I mean, that's what we do, like use the restroom here is more common sense, but I think for a city liability situation, um, we would definitely wanna look into see the liabilities of if we accept this, you know, like, I mean, I wanna, I wanna work with y'all, it's, it's more of a, it's more of a liability thing that I'm concerned about, just to make sure that, um, say something happens and we consciously knew that they were supposed to have these ADA bathrooms and something happened and then we're held liable because we, we know that, so, um, but, but it's not out of the spirit of not wanting to work with y'all, I mean, I think.
I think it all can be done probably, but we just need to see how.
But also, do we wanna spend the money on that or do we wanna pass that on to you all and down the road? That way we don't have to, and you've already got money invested in it already, so, you know, it's just, um, for the.
Not, not yet.
They've got, they have money invested in already.
Well, we both do.
Yeah, both, both entities have money invested in the building, so.
For the, at least, I guess the purpose of what's on the agenda, what do we need to do right now? I mean, how do we, how, how do we proceed legally with it since neither party has control over it officially?
Yeah, uh, well, the town still has control over it, because it's not part of the leased space. Um, so, I mean, there's a, a request right now, basically, is, is I understand it, to amend the lease to add that space to the museum's property. And they will enter, part, if part of that agreement, they will sublease that to, uh, the spot or allow the spot to use it. And then maybe have a provision in there, but all that can be included in the lea-, in an amended lease. Um, unless the town wants to explore a sale, and I guess you could do both, you could go ahead and, and
Just like, can we?
Move forward with an amended lease.
Just go ahead and change the lease, is that? Is that okay with you? I mean, are you, like, I wanna, the whole, the whole reason I brought this up is cause I knew the spot was running out of space and needed the space, and I know y'all use it and everybody needs to use it, no, one person needs to have.
We want it best utilized, so neither of us would utilize it.
I wanna make sure that we can get it used as quickly as possible, and then we can, we can worry about, you know, a sale.
And we've always been maintaining and upgrading.
Ten years or whenever, like, that's not, I mean, we've owned it for this long and it's not like it's killing us, so.
Why don't, go ahead. I was gonna ask, and, and I'm, I'm just gonna defer to Todd on this, just from a liability standpoint, do you see any issues with, with us going in, doing this, letting them use it? I, I don't think there are any additional issues based, assuming the space is being used some now. Which I assume it's, it's not at all.
No, it, it couldn't become the electrical upgrades.
We need to look at the ADA issue and see, make sure we comply, and we can ha-, make that a provision in the lease amendment that says, you know, that they're responsible for complying with ADA. And we can figure out what the capacity limits are for it and put that in there. Um, so if we have that protection, I think we're okay under the lease, but we do want, it is something we wanna look at.
We do have, Chief Hyatt went through and did a, a, a account of how many people could actually be in there either sitting or sitting at the table. Yeah, occupancy, and then we had the building inspector come in based on that and told us how many restrooms each for women, men and women in ADA.
Did that take into account the use of their current facilities though?
Well, no, this is just for the Performance Hall.
Right.
If, if you had a hundred people in there, you'd have to have cer- certain number of bathrooms. If you had a hundred fifteen there, you'd have to have, and that's just ADA requirement, so just, so everybody's upfront knows this, is all I'm saying, going in, you know this.
And I'm not, and, uh, my main job here is to look out, you know, for the cities and taxpayer. That's my number one objective here. Also, think these are great two entities here, and I, I feel like it would be probably in, in, in your best interest, your best interest and our best interest, if we step back for a couple weeks, make sure we cross our Ts, dot our Is, make sure we're good to go, cause we can put this on the agenda and be meeting here in two weeks and talking about it then. And maybe come up with some alternative plans, because again, I'm just, I'm more like, let's just say that we put that liability on them, for example. And so they got the liability in there in writing, and then we end up selling it, and then they're forced to do an upgrade, because it's already in there. That might not be good. Does that make sense? So that's why I feel like it would be beneficial to just hold. Let every, let every entity look at what the best scenario is, then come back and that way, we're not all tied up in legal issues.
Well, don't we already have that information as to what we need to put in the lease as to the capacity and the?
Well, I was just maybe suggest table it till next time, we'll gather together what the.
That cost might fall onto, these, that's what I'm trying to say, that cost might end up falling onto you.
Yes.
Can I ask something? I know you two have talked about this, correct? Okay, uh, say for instance, and this is between y'all two, oh, you're two different groups, say something, is anything in that Performance Hall museum-related that could be damaged?
Not right at this moment. Pictures.
What would happen if it were? I mean, is that something that y'all could work out?
Probably.
You, you see where I'm going here?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, you got, you got two different types of groups there. Say that they damaged something that was worth something or, which in my opinion, it's all worth something in a museum like that. Um, what would happen? That's something we need to think about.
We'd have to both agree on what needs to be in there based on dual use.
What's, what's the boundaries on this thing?
But I don't think that would be different.
The only thing we have in there right now that we have spent a sizable amount of money are the tables, correct?
Right. I don't think there's any damage in those tables. You could barely move them.
Those tables would take a while.
Yep, I, I, I've been in there, it's a nice place. I mean, it's just stunningly, it's really, really nice. I would just hate to see it destroyed.
Oh, yeah.
If you know where I'm going here.
But going back to the bathrooms, I know the museums, they're ADA compliant, and if something was going on with the spot that got over whatever limit or whatever, would there be a way that they could use those?
That would be rare, but it could.
How many bathrooms do you have to use in?
Well, we have two, and one of those is handicapped accessible, correct, Barbara? I mean, they.
So is it a men's and women's or how is it set up?
It's just a.
It's just unisex.
Unisex type situation, yeah.
I, I just think we all need to be clear going in that we're understanding on the same page, that, that we've been told by our building inspector and our marshal, Chief Hyatt. There are specific things that we have to adhere to to be ADA compliant, so just, so everybody's on the same table.
Now, that's why I'm kind of, I'm really impressed, in the best interest of the city, get it off of our books, get it off of us having to make decisions for y'all, because we're not doing anything with it, they're doing things with it, they've got money invested in it already, and we just, you know, turn it over to them and in a way, fair market or low vol, however we need to do it, obviously they've got money into it, we take that into account. And then just move forward. That way we don't have to deal with any of the compliance issues, and we're just.
We would need to get an appraisal on the building too, to figure out what value's gonna be, so we can go ahead and get started on that.
Appraisal, okay, that's a good point. So would you like to table this till next time, get your motion to that effect, and then we'll bring in all the information we have.
How would we go about getting the appraisal? Do we need to just motion to get an appraisal on the building or like, uh, is that, how many? If you want, yeah, if you wanna hi-, have a professional appraisal done as opposed to an informal.
It's a charge, but, yeah. Or an informal, we could get an informal if you don't want a professional.
Why don't we wait to see if we're going to do a lea-, amend the lease, or if we're gonna look, no need to do an appraisal.
We can get an informal, go do an informal walkthrough for nothing.
Let's, let's do an informal, just so we're not just ballpark, if we can, so I'd motion that we do an informal appraisal.
Do an informal, okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, on favor of an informal appraisal? Opposed? So we'll do an informal appraisal, we'll come back and discuss all the legal ramifications, ADA ramifications and.
I'm glad to draft a lease amendment based on the conversation that you put on the agenda for next month, and again, you don't have to approve it, but at least you'll have something in writing.
Do we need to include in that if the city needs to use it for anything, or an outside party needs to use it for anything?
Well, I, we didn't have any plans to be leasing it ourselves to outside parties.
If, if they were to be an art exhibit.
I would think the city, I don't know about outside parties, that could get difficult. But definitely the city.
And I can understand the city having an event there.
Right, if we wanted to have, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe that could be in some of our processes. All right, so we, uh, we'll be tabled list till next time and bring in all the information and get an informal appraisal, I guess. All right, the next going to new business now, we have the first reading of floodplain ordinance P dash two oh two zero zero one oh two dash one. We have Dr. Duke here, do you wanna ask some questions about that?
Well, we're not, we're not having to read you that tonight, because the floodplain ordinance, um, let me, let me explain the reason why we're not. We, we had the floodplain ordinance drawn up and it went through the planning commission, and it was a passion of ours through the, uh, planning commission. And then we had, uh, Mrs. Amy Miller, who's the FEMA representative, the, for, the, for Tennessee, or FEMA representative, uh, came in and we have a meeting with her on January the eighth, and basically, uh, she wanted to tweak our ordinance just a little bit. It was her ordinance, but she wanted, anyway, now, she's the one that's gonna be looking at it anyway, so she wanted to tweak it just a little bit. And so she took it with her, and we only got that back today, uh, from, from, from her. So by due process, the way this has to, has to go for it to do, to be legal, uh, it has to, it has to go back through the planning commission one more time and everybody approve that, then bring it back here for the first reading. Now, the reason why we were doing, why there was such a rush on that to start out with, was because she was originally gonna come back on March the eighth to do a, a, a survey again and see if we were up to date, but she extended that out until October. So we've got plenty of time to do that, so we'll run that back through the planning commission again, and she only made like two little tiny changes in it, but she's most gonna be looking at and approving it, so we want it right for her, so.
So we'll, we'll, uh, we'll table this until such time as the planning commission.
It should, well, hopefully, we can get it in through this planning commission meeting next Thursday, so it shouldn't rotate back around for first reading uh, by the city council next, y'all's next meeting, city council.
All right, thank you. Uh, okay, the next, uh, is Mr. Cool, our auditor is here with a, an audit report.
May I, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna speak a little longer than I would normally, can you, you wanna move me to the bottom in case there are others that are shorter?
Okay, if you don't mind, Mr. John Kelly Lish is here about a dog park for his Eagles scout, we'll, we'll let him go next if, if in case he needs to get home. Okay. Mr. John Kelly, how can we help you with this? Do you need a?
Hi. Hello. Which is the highest rank in scouting you can achieve. To get Eagle, you have to build a community park. For my project, I would like to build a dog park here in Smith County. I'm here to propose an off-leash dog park where dogs and owners have a safe, well-maintained area for recreation and socialization. To respond to a significant portion of the Smith County area for a vibrant play location for pets with their owners. The ideal area will be a safe, accessible location that takes into account the needs of users as well as the effect the park will have on neighbors and the environment. As for the location, I recommend the car, the lot across from the Carthage City Pool, because it has its own parking lot, a walking trail, trees for shade and much room for expansion. Plus, the right park and recreation committee said it's a good location. This location is a flood zone and will have to be separated by FEMA. The size of the park as for now will be an eighty by eighty fence divided into two forty by forty tents, with one tent for small dogs and the other for big dogs. The fence will be four to six feet tall, equipped with a double gated entry to keep dogs from escaping and to facilitate literature access, and one large gate for mowers and supplies. Outside the fence will be assigned with the name of the park, which I think Eagles Dog Park would be a cool name, as well as park rules, trash cans, a leash post, and plastic bags to pick up the pieces. Inside the fence will be several things for the dogs to do, such as jumping hoops, a fire hydrant, stepping pads, dog hurdles and much more. The folder I have given you has pictures of what the equipment looks like, as well as much more information. The folder I have due in you has pictures of what the equipment looks like, as well as much more information. Most of the park will be entirely funded by donations and from what supplies up will be donated in fence, any questions?
So what would you like from the council, and just, just clarify this, we've already talked. Basically, we're talking only about the site right now, still we'd have to go through the planning commission as far as what has to be done with the flood zone, so. We're just talking about the potential site right now, and it, since it's city property he's looking at. Um, you can either take it into consideration and come back, uh, which might be a good thing. So if, if I'm looking correctly, you're looking at the walking park, is that the map here? So it's this, this area right here, and where's the specific, what do you think about, is there a specific area?
Uh, it would probably be in the bottom or in the top left or top right corner.
Okay, so if we're looking at this way.
Somewhere in the.
So if we're looking at it that way. And you've laid out specifications for how it would be laid out and some of the funding for it, is that right? So would it be okay with y'all if we take this under consideration and come back next time after you've had a chance to consider?
Absolutely, it's something that's needed, for sure.
Yeah, I think, when we were talking about this once before, we got twenty-something letters of support. For a possible grant for this that we had last year, so would that be okay with you if you take it into consideration? If you come back next month and let us talk to you a little more?
Can I ask you a question too? Should, should this location, um, i- is this contingent on it mu- at this location? Or if there was to be another location, the same, same sort of design possibly?
Uh, yeah, there is, uh, two more locations, one of them I don't think will work out, but the other one is near that one.
Okay, okay.
About, it's pretty much across the street.
Okay, um, and the, the only reason, I think, I think you've done an excellent job on this, by the way, um, and I just got a dog, so. He's gonna train me somewhere. Um, one, one thing that I do know, I know when it came up last time, I had, I had several residents that did not. Um, they did not want a park right there in there, because there was a lot of the people whose backyard was backed up. And so, um, I do, I, this is a, I, I would say this is better proposal than the last engineer had. So, um, I think it would be good for, um, if I can give you a suggestion, to go speak to a lot of the neighbors around there. And show them what you're looking to do, and, uh, that might help you gain some support, um, on that side as far as it goes. And, and show them your ideas, and I think that would go a long way. Um, it's just a suggestion for you, but I, I can tell you've put a lot of time into this, and so, um, that's why I wanted to make that suggestion to you, so.
I'd also suggest that you might use in your presentation to those people, that there are already people using that facility with their dogs routinely. So it's already exists there.
And this would be fenced in wherever they're not fenced in, right, so it would be much safer for everyone to have a fenced in area.
And one thing I'd like to, I'd like to see too, is, um, you're, you got your breakdown in here of funding sources. Um, is if you did, you know, a, a spreadsheet of your total funding, how much percentage you want to come from which area? And so you do your breakdown percentages of funding sources, and that helps us as a council decide, you know, how best to use taxpayer money. How we can look at, you know, areas to volunteer, and also shows the community where you're trying to raise money, where, what marks you need to hit too. So, um, I think it's excellent.
I have a question also, um, you said there's a second location that might work, would that also have to have the FEMA survey, is it also the floodline?
To be exact, is it right across from the pool, the city pool, on that corner? Is that correct?
Yeah, over there.
Okay, um.
Well, the one he's looking at would be at the walking track area.
At the walking track?
At the back end of the walking track, so to speak.
Okay, one you're looking at now.
He's also looking at one next to the children's park there beside the pool.
That was gonna have a walking track there and then never got put in.
So you're talking about the walking track area?
And also, you know, keeping in.
Cause if it were the other, I was concerned about the parking, you know, when people, you know.
Keeping ideas for, you know, if, if we do something like this, keeping ideas for future, you know, let's say we're gonna plant a bunch of trees, we're gonna really weave in that. Walkin' track, we do the community garden and things like that, make sure that that's, that's kind of, um, that's kind of also thought of. In that footprint, around that footprint, so.
Thank you, John Kelly, very nice, and we'll, would you will. First Thursday, February, so put that on your calendar, first Thursday, six o'clock, and we'll, we'll all talk some more about this, thank you very much, very nice, thank you. Alrighty, um, so, let's see. Do you mind if we do a couple more items? Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll step down to the CBDG grant and chief of staff, okay. This is just basically, do, do you wanna go ahead and try to apply for that, and not have to have approval to apply for this?
Um, I, I suggest in the, um, I think we got two major needs, um, in my opinion, and one's the fire truck. Uh, and then the other one is, we have some, the, the same grant can be used for, uh, water lines, sewer projects, things like that, but.
Only one or the other, though.
Um, yeah, but it has to be one or the other. Um, because, and this is my opinion, and it's not to go against the water or anything like that, but. There's a lot more grants out there for water and sewer, and there's not a lot of grants out there for the fire truck. We're in a really good position to get this grant, um, and it's like, like you're saying, it's a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant, sixteen percent. We're saving the taxpayers a ton of money, we've gotta get this fire truck in really bad. And they're looking at it, um, you know, we've got a need, we qualify really well. Um, I would highly recommend we go put in for this grant, um.
I agree with you, but first, uh, the oldest engine that we need to replace, what is the price of replacement?
Well, Joe, has Joe left yet? Chief.
Hey, Joe.
Chief Hyatt, Chief Hyatt.
Sir, Chief. The, the engine that you want to, that we need to replace the worst, roughly, what is the replacement cost on it?
Honestly, probably three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
So we can do it with that grant?
Yeah, exactly, yes.
So Joey kinda talked about engine two and five combining, something that would cover both if we need?
Might cost a little more, but just to get a replacement for engine five, which is probably the first one that needs to go. Depending on what it costs to get engine one fixed, but.
Is it engine five and engine one that you're looking at? Those are the two, engine five being priority? Okay, so, this is a, just to play devil's advocate, um, I think it would be great to apply for both, but. I would wanna check with the grant writers to see if that would put us more on a back burner as far as it goes, so.
Well, I think he's saying that he, if you combine those two, there is a truck that will actually do both of them.
One of the engines, we have another truck that we're not, it doesn't pump water, it's, we use it for, for medical, for rescues. We don't have ready access to it.
Right.
If we could replace, hopefully, five, engine five, and that, we might have that for sale.
And, and you called that, was it a charger or what did you call it?
It's, it's a rescue or a, uh, a squad, but we call it a support, so there's no confusion of the rescue squad.
Well, so, so we could apply for that one, but it'd just be a little bit more than just replacing one.
Probably looking at plus four. That grant pays for a truck.
Okay.
You pick it.
Yeah, so.
Then you can sell your others.
Okay.
It ain't contingent upon.
And then we can maybe apply down the road if it comes up again for another one, but we're in a good position now, we're at fifty-one percent. And at that threshold below that, then we get out of it, we're, then we become, and it's just, you know, few people away from getting out of that threshold of that fifty-one percent. So I would highly recommend, uh, that we apply for this grant for engine five, and so, um, I love.
Well, I was gonna say that to apply for the grant, and then Joe can kinda help us with that, but for an engine, whatever it is that we need, I mean. He's kinda saying if we could combine the two with this, this other one, then we can sell those two.
You can't combine the two, it is only for one engine.
No, no, I don't mean that, one, one engine that would take the place of the two you're talking about, Joe, that's what we're talking about.
Yes.
And then we can sell those others if we need to. Yeah, it's one, one truck that does both.
Kinda like another engine eleven, so I guess, i- if I was to make a motion, I guess my motion would be that we apply for this grant. For the engine to replace engine five upon, uh, Chief Hyatt's recommendation of the engine to go after, um, the other thing, I went to.
I did receive, I didn't bring it tonight, but I did receive from, uh, the grant writer a resolution for this application. And basically, all it says is that the, the tally is applying for the grant for the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for, uh, fire service. And so, then the town can decide later exactly what items it's.
Okay, okay, so motion would be to, to apply for the grant, okay. And then, um, just to give you all a heads up too, I went to this, I went to this meeting, both of them actually, on the grant. And it will help, uh, the more letters we have, Joe, if you can write a letter, if you can get you guys in the fire bay to write letters. If we can write letters, and any, every little bit helps to get this grant, and to do, taxpayers do justice, and you all do justice. The more information we can put into this packet to submit for the grant, the better chances we have of getting it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What percentage, did y'all say what percentage grant this is?
This is a si- it's sixteen percent. So, uh, this is four twenty, sixteen percent of four twenty.
Hear a motion then that we move forward and, and.
I, I already have a motion.
Okay, who's got a second on this, please?
I will.
Alright, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of this moving forward and applying for this grant for four hundred and twenty-five or whatever the amount would be? Okay, all in favors? All opposed? Okay, so we will move forward and apply for that, great.
And could, could I just ask, and, um, Chief Hyatt, we, can, um, you're gonna be very heavily involved in this, correct? Cause we want, yeah, okay, cause we want you, you guys solid on it, so we, I, I would like to take recommendations from you. Not from, of your craft.
So, so, uh, UCDD will be helping us put this together, Joe, so maybe we can sit down with him and you tell them kinda what you're looking for, if that's okay, alright, great. Okay, then we have the two other things that I've mentioned, and there's, you just got this this afternoon, which is amazing. Uh, I think we had mentioned some time ago that Carthage got on the priority list for the state revolving fund loans for both water and sewer. We just got this back from their, from TDEC, uh, they have to audit us to see if we qualify or not, there's a copy in there for all of you. Uh, and it's basically saying that we do qualify, that we have the finances to qualify for the INI, which is the sewer. Redoing all of our sewer lines with the, the design and planning, and if you look at this, ladies and gentlemen, it's three hundred and sixty, and it's three hundred and a thousand. But a hundred percent principal forgiveness, that's unheard of, and we will become one of three pilot projects in, in the state if we move ahead with this. Which is, uh, we've got, we had, uh, the person who, who for free got us on the, the list is Mr. George Kurz. He's an engineer who worked with Hamilton County to redo all of their INI system. Uh, he, his work is in, is a template that's in our municipal code, he's worked with Ricky and Steve to help them with their new permitting down there. All of this for free, and he has offered his services to come on board if we get this to, to be the design and planning aspect of this. And, and TDEC is tickled with paint about it, I'll tell you, because they, they know about his work and it's this letter right here.
Okay, I didn't see it in my packet. Thank you, sorry, I knew I had.
So, how, how do you, what did we do?
I don't think we take any actions, just for information tonight, but. Moving forward, there'll be a loan agreement and we'll need to do an agreement with Mr. Kurz.
We'll come back next time with that information, but just wanna let you know, this is pretty big stuff.
Then we'll, we'll be on the agenda for next month, next meeting to vote on.
I don't know what, but Ken, I just saw this letter when I got here tonight too, so I don't know what their timeframe is for when they'll have a loan agreement ready. Uh, and when we'll have an agreement with Mr. Kurz, but I would assume in the next meeting or two, they'll have that ready.
If it's okay with y'all, we'll get all the information we can gathered from TDEC and, um, all the specifics of how this would work. But again, it's kind of unheard of, a hundred percent loan, principal forgiveness. If I, unless there's some catch I'm not catching in this, I'm gonna give them a call, cause we just got this about, well, if it, it came through at the end of the day. So I'm gonna call them tomorrow, make sure this is for real, because that would be amazing.
And now, does that, that covers, does that cover the Futural Alley and? This is just that citywide on here?
Yeah, there's two, there's two different priority lists, there's one for sewer and then one for the drinking water. But the same lady said, if we wanna go ahead and apply for that particular loan also. We would qualify because she's already audited us for this one, so we, but, but we have to get the engineer, there's stuff that they have to turn in too for that one. So, um, we can, we can do some further gathering of that. But the great thing with that one is, right off the bat, it went from four hundred and twelve thousand down a hundred and thirty-five thousand with this engineer, so we saved over. Way over two hundred thousand just off the bat on that one, so if you wanna, should we take something to move forward with that too, or how would you?
If we're done with this one, then we can discuss the other.
So if that's okay with everyone, we'll, we'll research this, get all the stuff from TDEC and bring it back next time, is that okay with everyone? Okay, great. Alright, so the next one then would be the, then for, uh, the other priority for the, for the, um. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I took these out of order, excuse me, so that was the one for the, the INI, the sewer, so let's skip back then to the one for the Futural Alley. And again, um, the person who tried to get us on that priority list is, uh, Mr. Steve Jones from Water Management. Since he was doing a water tank also, and he did that free of charge also, um, so. What do we need to do now?
I, I did receive an agreement from the engineer with Water Management Services today, I have reviewed it, it's for this project. Um, I, I'm glad if you want to go ahead and approve it, or if you want to put it on the February agenda, I can make sure everybody has copies to review beforehand. Um, but again, that would, that's rel- separate but related to approval for the application to the SRF priority loan. It's just that he need, the engineer needs this contract in order to get started with the work that he needs to do to finalize that application.
Now, are we talking about the water tank or the other?
No, we're talking about the alley water line.
In your opinion, should we approve this?
Uh, I don't know that the timing makes any difference between now and, and the sixth, but, um. The agreement is fine, uh, the total engineering fees, uh, for the design phase are eighty-five hundred. Um, that's a not to exceed amount, again, that'll just give him a couple more weeks to get moving on it if we approve it tonight.
And that's opposed to what, something a hundred thousand, that was the last one, so, it's not a difference.
Nice, yeah. I mean, I'm, if you don't see any issue, difference, I mean, I'm probably going, that's probably we waiting on forever.
Yes, I'm gonna go. I make a motion we approve it.
I'll second.
To move forward, is that how?
Yeah, that's fine. Move forward and to, uh, enter in the agreement with the engineer to complete the application.
So it's okay for me to go ahead and sign that, okay, alright, alright, so we'll move forward with that. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, motion, we need a second, I'm gonna.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of moving forward? I tell you, let's, since Mr., our auditor said, let's just go ahead, cause you, you came from far away.
Okay.
You've talked to us, and you, you wanna come up here?
Uh, I, I'll do whatever you want me to do.
However you feel comfortable.
My name's John Poole, I am a CPA, hired to perform the, uh, state required annual audit, which there is a draft of, the audit is in process. We're just waiting for the mayor to go through then and approve that, she will say she's not an accountant and it's gonna take her a while to get through that, and we will help her do that. What I did wanna do is, I, I, I did wanna give some highlights, and I know it's late in the night, and I don't wanna talk a whole lot about numbers, but I got a little packet for you. And so if you don't mind, let me just point out some highlights, and then I'll actually wanna talk about some opportunities, if you don't mind. Uh, the third page, probably the most important page in the audit is, is the third page, it's page nineteen at the bottom. Fourth page, page nineteen at the bottom. This board is very aware, the state requires us to keep monies in what they call separate funds, it's separate books. We can't co-mingle monies, use monies from one source for another, the utility fund, it's probably the one that, uh. If I was on the board, would pay more attention to it, because state has rules and regulations on how the water system actually performs. state has rules and regulations on how the water system actually performs, in other words, this board is very aware. Utility funds have to make a profit at least every other year, if not, they're subject to financial regulation, and there's nothing but good news. If you go about three-fourths of the way down that page, there is a line that says net change in net position, they're on page nineteen. You can see it's plus three thirty-two, uh that would be the surplus from the water and sewer fund during the year. So that is certainly not a negative number, that certainly puts us uh in the fifth dead. Uh, I, obviously it did very well, based on uh three hundred and something thousands of profit on one point three billion in sales up there at the, the top shows that, you know, obviously you are performing very well. So I did wanna point that out, let me also have you go to the second page in this packet, uh just to talk about the other numbers. The one set of numbers, surplus of three hundred thousand for the utility, here on the second page, which is that page sixteen, the other sets of monies, the general fund, that's the, the set of funds we're all familiar with, property tax money, uh sales tax money. And if you'll go once, once again, about three-fourths down the page, you'll see that line, excess deficiency of revenue over expenses. Once again, that's just a surplus, I always say we use English, but they don't, you can see that's a plus six hundred thousand dollar number. Police has a drug fund, once again, hundred, a hundred and eighty-two dollars, that, for these funds, the nonutility, always better to have surpluses, but it's that you, you're supposed to use the money, so some years you hope surpluses, some years when you do big projects, you're gonna have deficits, so state doesn't get involved with surplus and deficits in this. Uh, but just to give you the, the sanitation fund there in the third column, uh thousand, twelve hundred dollars, and then the State Street Aid Fund. Uh, we didn't spend any monies in that fund, so that was all just money from the state plus eighty-six, so go over here to the total, seven hundred and three thousand. So if you combine what the water and sewer fund did, three hundred thousand, to combine with the nonutility fund, seven hundred thousand. Basically, the city had a surplus of almost a million dollars uh for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And I don't need to say that that's very good, cause obviously that's, that's very good. Uh, but don't just, now, what I wanna talk to you about tonight is, I'm gonna have you turn, and I, I do apologize, I should've said, I apologize for talking so much tonight, but to me, this is important. Um, and I think you'll see why. There on, next to last page is page fifty-eight, uh number fifty-eight at the bottom. This is gonna show the uh cash balances that we had, this again, this is as of June. I would almost guarantee these balances are a little bit higher now, but that's not sure. But a- and you can see there at the bottom, almost six million dollars there in, in cash. Uh, the year of this audit, the city had interest income, I'm gonna say of about six thousand dollars. To make six thousand dollars in interest on six billion dollars with the monies, not too good. So, one of the things that I, I mentioned to them, I mentioned to Jennifer, mentioned to the mayor is, we probably could do better with our monies. Uh, and here's what I mean by that, for example, uh the state has something that they call a local government investment pool. It's where all the big cities put their surplus funds, uh there's a website, it talks all about it. We looked at the rate the last three or four years, I think it's paying one point seven eight, but it acts like a savings account. In other words, if you need your money tomorrow, you can get your money tomorrow. Needless to say that these monies are one hundred percent insured, uh it's, if you, I would say it's even better than FDIC. Uh, you have FDIC up to two fifty, but that, over that, the state has to provide either insurance or collateral for one point five percent of your money. Your money's safe, if you contact big cities, that's what they use. Cities would certainly be better. But it's hard for us to, to get the timing of when we're gonna need these funds, and honestly, there's not enough labor in City Hall to pay attention that should be, that's why we only earn six thousand dollars, so I've asked the mayor to ask you guys to consider better utilizing your funds. Uh, and once again, I'm just gonna do math, let's just, of this six million, let's say we took uh five million of that and put that in there at one point seven five, that's eighty thousand dollars, I think, give or take. And so that's basically a seventy-five thousand dollar a year decision, uh uh better off that we would be. Yeah.
Is it one point seven five or two point two five percent? Cause of the lack?
Now, I, I'll be honest, it has been a while since I've looked, I think it's one point seven eight, but if it's, it changes.
I think I got that number from you last time.
Uh, if you got two point two five for me, I said that wrong.
Okay.
I'm, I'm.
I just wrote it down.
Yeah, yeah.
So one point seven five, okay.
Yes, and it changes much, and once again, that rate is gonna change with the federal, you know, so if the Federal Reserve drops rates, all the banks are gonna drop their rates. Same, same with this, but you can look over that, it's been pretty consistent, money's guaranteed. The only downside to this is, is I've talked to the mayor, you're moving the money out of the city, and that may not be something this board wants to do. But eighty thousand dollars a year, and in some communities, that would be a problem, Carthage is such a going area. You know, I, I don't speak for the banks I don't know, but I think that would be an opportunity for this board to explore, you don't have to do it all at once. But just as a way of better utilizing our funds, and then like you said, if we need something, if we decide you guys doing the, the fire exits, and if you owe three hundred thousand dollars, you wire it to the bank account the next day.
It's twenty-four hour?
Yeah, and they say twenty-four, yeah, they say twenty-four hours, uh yes, so I, and I've had places use it forever and never heard any problems, like you said. One hundred percent insured, that, you're not losing that principal, it's, it's there, if, yeah, so.
So is there a downside?
Yeah, moving the money out of city, moving out, I, I, you know, there may be some people, oh, I don't know why we take the money that's, and I would say, here's eighty thousand reasons why we're moving it.
Two point three eight.
Okay.
Well, it, it looks like, I mean, it was as much as two point three eight last February, and then in December was one point seven four, so it, it's dropped a lot the last half of last year.
And it's gonna, that, that, it's gonna follow, I mean, once again, they're not out there just bunking rates around. What, what the Fed does is what they're, they're, I mean, so they're not.
It's not a fixed rating.
No, no, it, it's gonna change, it's gonna change every month, but once again, it's not like it's gonna go from one point seven eight to one seven five without Washington having done something, the federal, and that will drop everybody.
Do we know what we're getting on our CDs now?
I can tell you this, you got four thousand, about six thousand dollars in interest total last year.
On our CDs?
Uh, yeah, and you don't have a lot of CDs, most of that money's just sitting in check to checking accounts.
And he was, he was looking at the rates here, and there was only two months that was below two percent, and most of them, some of them were two point three to two point four on the, on the rates, and so you're looking at, at one point seven five, you're looking at seventeen point five on the million dollar, um seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And so you throw, like, you save five million bucks on it, and we can, we can, we can fund a department on interest.
If we, I'm fixing to spend that money for you, so hang on for a second. I'm fixing to spend it for you, so that, that's a different discussion, but yeah, once again, that's just something for you guys to, to consider.
How much would you want us to leave in our checking accounts here to operate off of, how much would we need, you say we need to move all five?
No.
I mean, we've got five point nine.
Right.
Do you want us to move five and leave nine hundred and thirty-two total?
My honest answer to that is the person that ends up filling this role, I wanna put enough money in that account where she sleeps good at night. So she's not worried about.
Aren't we at a one point five million dollar a year operating cost?
Yeah, but you, you're getting money all the time.
Yeah.
You added a million bucks to she, and so, and, and if you got something big coming up, you can move it. So I, I think you get uh an amount that whoever's in that seat is comfortable with, that they're not gonna worry about, oh, I gotta go get money, and that's probably a ma- a million, half million, whatever they're, so let me, you know, half a million in water, half million in general, that kinda thing. So there's a number that the person that's in that seat is gonna feel comfortable with, and I'm certainly not gonna argue more or less, more or less. My, my whole theme is, let's just, let's get some earnings on it.
Yeah, do you know how much debt we have right now?
I, I do, and that's, that's the, if you go to the next page, that's my next point, because.
Cause I feel like we'd be better off paying the debt off right now with all that money.
Yeah, and generally, that's what we as auditors talk about, this is the debt that's in the uh utility fund. And the debt that you have there, I, I'll, it's the very last page, if you'll go across, this debt is all, this is the utility, and it's all state. That none of the interest is over one, you're not paying more than one percent on these loans, and so most of the time, you're exactly right, the best thing to do is to pay down your debt. But if I'm gonna get one point seven five, I'm only gonna pay one for once, it works in our favor. So, but, but yes, and I can tell you as an auditor, we, we, that's one of the things we look at every year, we're always, so then we've talked about this, moving the money, moving the money. Because just not a priority, and I totally understand that, we're gonna talk about, just never got done, so that's why I'm kinda going the next step, and I bring it to the mayor, bring it to the board saying, let's don't miss this, let's don't miss this.
So it looks like we owe, I'm sorry, that we owe currently one point nine million dollars?
Yes, sir, that's at next to last column, that's exactly right.
And how much of that one point nine is water?
You could pay it off, if you go to previous page, well, yeah.
Also, all of our debt is water, there's no debt on anything else.
Well, well, let me ask you, because all of these state revolving fund loans we have were the things that we did to the water plant and, and you're paying ten thousand a month right now, is my understanding, to pay those off.
But, but some of that, some of that's principal, that, that's, that's not, I mean, I, I guess what we're saying is.
It's not interest.
Usually it's, usually it's in our best interest to pay down debt with money we have, because the interest rate that we're paying is more than we're receiving. Which is our case right now, but if you move that money to the local government investment pool, it's just the opposite.
And so, is it, is it interest, is it cur- curved interest, so basically like you, you'd say if, if we were to pick and choose our debts, we're gonna wanna pay off our, our newer, our newer debts?
The, well, these, these loans are all simple, simple interest, and we could look at.
Yeah.
If, we could look up there, and I could actually show you that report, the one that you'd wanna pay off.
Could you send us a, uh, basically our, our, our interest flow charts as far as on our debts, can you do that?
Well, now, now those are the interest amounts in those columns, see, it's got a principal column, and then, would you pass me, this is a direct, can I borrow that copy of that audit report? If you don't mind, I'm gonna, I just wanna look, I've got the rates in here, I just wanna, give me just one second, I apologize, this will take long.
The, uh, we could just, cause we could just plug this in Excel, do a flow chart on that.
Yeah, the, the interest rates on the loans, uh, one point four four, point oh eight three, one point two three. So of, of these loans, the highest one is one point four four.
Which one was that one?
Uh, the two, the one that has a balance of, uh, the first one is a two hundred and fifty-one thousand there, that's a one point four four. The big one there is a one point four four.
That, I'm sorry, that big one, was that, what was that for, do you remember?
Up at the top it says drinking water, so I'm gonna assume that's some type of.
Okay.
Water.
So if you're gonna cross the sheet.
It's probably the water tank and.
Yeah, so going across one point four four, one point four four, and then let me.
And the grit.
And then the, the one that has a balance of five oh eight is a point oh eight three. And then the last one has a one point two three.
And so you're looking at also our interest rate, you know, our interest on the very top, you print this principal interest, we got one that's fifteen thousand interest versus two thousand interest. Um, so I mean, that number two's the one that's like, you know, even though technically five hundred's a bigger number, interest wise, we're paying a lot more on number two than number three, correct?
Uh, yes, both in rate and dollar amount.
Yeah, and so we'd be saving, you know, paying off early, we're saving a hundred and fifty-eight K in interest versus even if it's that bigger one, that's the five oh eight, but that's a point zero eight interest. We'd wanna pay the higher interest, um, bonds off.
Yes, except, we're making more, if you move the money to the state investment pool, you're making a higher interest rate than what you're paying out. So by having the debt and giving them the money in the local government, you're making money. Most of the time, it's never that way, but because these were part of a grant program where they gave interest rates that are, you know, not market rate, below market rate. We used to our advantage to keep the money in the bank account and not pay the debt, which.
Before paying off the principal on that as opposed to the interest, we'd be paying off one point one million in, in principal. And so you're taking that one point one million dollars, and then you can take that a hundred and fifty-eight and put, add that back in and start making interest on the interest that you would've paid.
No, 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 I, I think, I think, uh, uh, and I may have gotten you confused, and so, let me try again.
Okay.
By, by putting the money at the state, in the local state investment pool, in their savings account, you're gonna earn whatever that number was, one point seven eight, two point. Whereas if we pay off the loan, we're only, I mean, our savings is one point four four, cause that's the rate on the loan, so literally, we're making almost half a percent by them holding our money and us paying it off, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, it cash flows by us holding it, not paying off on, which is something auditors would never say, but you're in the unique position of all those loans were special situations, and so.
We're in a, I mean, this is, these are some, I'd love to walk in a company like this, you know what I'm saying? This is a good, we're in a good situation.
But we have a chance to improve it here.
It looks like, to me, cause you said we could make about seventy-five thousand a year.
More than what.
We could make, whatever. We could probably make more than that. So it looks like, I'm just going on these figures, so it's uh eighteen years, and if I did seventy-five thousand times eighteen, that's one point three million dollars, that would pay a lot, I mean, it's, the interest that we're making would pay these notes, I mean, we're just gonna end up washing.
Washing to our favor though.
Right.
You're choosing the opposite, so, so it's better not to pay them than to pay them.
It's almost like the interest off of the savings account would pay these notes.
Uh, certainly, you, certainly pay the interest part of it, not quite all the principal, but you gotta pay the principal back no matter what.
But I'm saying it would almost.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're almost, yeah.
That's, it's exactly right, you'd be making more, that's right.
We're gonna make it one way or the other.
You're cash flowing by doing nothing, nice, except moving that money, your cash flow, that's.
I think, yeah.
And when it, if it ever reverses, then we come back and we pay them off.
Right.
So.
So historically, how often has it reversed like that, do you know?
Well, we, the, the interest rate on loans is always higher than what you get at the bank, but we got special loans, just like the ones you're coming up are gonna be, even if they're, the part that's not forgiven, it's probably gonna be under this, lower interest, so. So.
So what do you suggest?
I'm suggesting that, that, that you, uh, as appropriate, the board always has to approve opening a new account. And so, you know, I'm just asking you guys to look into this with the, the hopes that they will allow you to open a new account. And then as that position, position is filled, if I can be helpful in us determining what's a proper amount, and then of course bringing that before the board and say, hey, we wanna start by moving a million dollars there and.
He said that if they let us open a new account?
Wait, you guys have to prove.
Okay, I didn't know like the state.
Oh, you're, you're good at the state.
Okay.
So do you wanna address this next time, look through it and address it next time, or what, what do you want?
I'm comfortable, but I wanna make sure y'all are comfortable, I'm, I'm comfortable starting looking at this right off the bat, the surroundings are turning more interesting on this, the better.
Yep.
Um, so I'll motion that, um.
I think, just glancing at the website, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it looks like that we could go ahead and start an application without, and that they may want you to pass a resolution, but I think you could go ahead and authorize the mayor to, to start the application process.
So I'll motion that we authorize the mayor to start the application process then.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any discussion, further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll start the application process, Mr. Poole, we may need your help with that.
Okay, be glad to.
Thank you for.
Very good.
Sure, we'll, we'll come back now, before you, before you pat me on the back now, I wanna talk to you about something.
Oh.
I'm gonna step out of my, I'm gonna step a little bit out of my role as auditor, and I do wanna emphasize, I, I'm just the auditor, I'm not a member of management. But I wanna talk about the key accounting position. Uh, thirty years ago, when I started, if you were a good bookkeeper, you could do that job back there, that's just not the case today, it's so complicated, the town has grown. Couple things, you need some expertise to deal with all the accounting issues that you have, I'm just gonna be glad to talk about what those are, but it will take a while. And so I know you guys are gonna hire a new position, I've even, I, I've even had conversations with the mayor that the workload for that person may be more than one job, one person, I mean, it just may be, that's, that's more for y'all than, than me. But you need some more technical expertise and people, and sometimes, one or two things, you can try to hire that technical expertise, and I hope you can. But it's, it's gonna cost, I mean, it really is, you know, you're gonna have to get, it's a big number. You can also hire an outside firm that to kinda give you guidance, a lot of cities will hire an outside CPA firm, and once again, I'm not talking about myself, cause I'm the auditor, I have, I can't, yeah, certainly not me I'm talking about, but to come in. certainly not me I'm talking about, but to come in and help with some of the technical, for example, just even things like bank reconciliations. The last few recorders have not been able to reconcile the bank statements on there because they got seventeen other things to do. It's just such a workload, and there just needs to be, uh, experience level. I guess I'm just saying, i- if I've helped you gain some money today, I wanna help you spend some of that money by either, you know, being able to hire somebody with all the qualifications, or if you have to break it up, anyways. I, I've said what I need to say, and I'm just an outsider, so don't
And you did share something that was quite interesting, Smithville right now does have it broken up. They have a CPA who's actually doing their CMFO position, and then they have a separate person doing the city recorder, which a lot of, we've kinda researched this, a lot of cities have it set up that way.
Because you have to now, it, where it's gone and where it's at, you know, so, once again, I, I'm not a member of this board, but just
Something, I think it's something we need to consider, because if a CPA comes in, they can hit the ground running. Otherwise, they have to go through a year of training just to be the CMFO certification.
And I don't think we're talking about that CPA being a full time, this would be someone who would come in
A part time CPA.
Once a week, yes, to come in and, and, and first of all, definitely get us going, and then on these big issues that you need, how much money they serve and all, all that, but also to help with just, just the monthly, the monthly accounting where it is today.
Yeah, and I, that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I think that'd just be a part time position, you know, yeah, get the thing wrong, but I mean, you're looking at a one, once a week, you know, doing reconciliation, once a month kinda deal, and, and it, it's so important for us to reconcile.
Well, I'd like to see, find out from Smithville what they're spending.
Well, and they bring her in two days a week, I think two or three.
I'm gonna say, I still think it's one, I, I still think in Smithville it's one. Okay.
I agree, I agree with you.
I talked to the gentleman over there, and let me double check with
Yeah, absolutely.
She is actually an employee.
Yeah, it has to be an employee, you're gonna, CMFO has to be employee.
Yeah.
So that's
And it can be part time, but it's someone who can hit the ground running, who has that background, if it's a CPA, to just get in there and do your W two, do everything that needs to be done.
You're gonna spend ten, twelve thousand.
Do you know what firm is doing theirs?
Uh, it's Channing's Clemens, they're out of Crossville.
It's at Crossville, okay.
Yeah, but, but like you said, they, they, they're being a number
Just for you to know, after Mr. Cole talked to me about this, I, I've called several CPAs around who've done municipal work, and there's several possibilities, so, uh, once, once we've gathered that information, I will bring it back to you, but we've talked to several who might be interested in a part time.
Is it feasible for some of them to put in a bid, so we know what we would, we would be working with?
Sure.
All, all the people that are interested, put in a bid?
But they're being, they'll be an employee.
We negotiate, it's negotiating a wage.
Yep.
I mean, if they say I'll do it at eight hundred dollars a month, great, your, your salary's eight hundred, and we take out payroll, yeah.
Just to make sure we can do that with an employee, cause I don't know how that works.
Well, you can certainly, you know, pay them whatever you decide to pay them, so I mean, you could always negotiate the salary with an employee. I'm thinking about, and I don't know how, if you've seen it, how other cities have done it, been on that end of the process, you may wanna start the process almost like an RFQ though, as far as getting that information, it sounds like you've done that. But ultimately, you're just gonna negotiate an employment agreement with an individual or a firm that qualifies and pay them whatever you
But, but again, they have to be an employee by law, so
Can, can I make a suggestion that, um, you give us about four or five cities that are comparable to ours that are currently doing this? And that way we can ask those cities, instead of just maybe just asking Smithville, we can kinda roll it in together, come up with an average and put that down.
Exactly.
Do we need to have a motion for that or anything, or just? Okay, and, and that's something, honestly, probably closer to budget time, it's just something to look, you know, looking, cause we'll have to
We need, we need somebody.
We surely need some bodies now.
Well, we need, we definitely need, we definitely need a body right now, but as far as that position goes, I mean, if we need, cause we'd have to amend the budget to cover
There's already money for that position.
There's money for the full time position, but do we have money in there for the part time position?
He's right, yeah, I think, I think he's right.
Yeah, you need to amend the budget, so
You got him in.
Yeah.
Well, I think if y'all check with some cities that do this, we'll bring that back next time. I've got some CPAs who might be willing to talk to us about what they do, so let's, let's put our resources together on this, cause I think he's exactly right, we need someone who can just get in there, look at what's going on, and just like that, help us figure
And I'd like to, I like to get multiple CPAs.
Absolutely.
I don't wanna just have one picked, so.
Well, no, we've got at least three we've talked to already, y'all, y'all, that's what I'm saying, y'all, go look for them. That's, that's great, but it helps if they have municipal back, background, they know how to work with the governments. Okay, so we will come back with that information next time?
Thanks for the time.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we've gone over this, and we go down to scheduling the budget workshops.
Oh, you, we just roll right into it, so, um, I spoke with Jennifer for quite some time, uh, before she left, um, and one of her heavy, heavy recommendations, and I completely agree with her on, was that we, we kinda hold a more thorough budget workshop, I think last time we kinda had a budget workshop and, and rolled through it, and, um, I think it would help if we did that, we, you know, maybe we split it up into maybe a few workshops, a few different departments to really analyze, not necessarily just go line on, line on, yes, you should get everything you need, but really focusing on, um, what are strong needs, what are weaker needs, what are, you know, um, what are not necessities? And, um, obviously, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that are coming up, we've got a surplus, um, we need to be, it's good to have a rainy day fund, but when we have too much of rainy day fund, the citizens are overtaxed. And so we could possibly be looking at, um, maybe possibly cutting some taxes down, or eliminating some fees somewhere, and also looking for ways to transfer and funnel more revenue in areas, you know, just for example, uh, you could lower taxes based on this interest. Um, so, uh, while it's important to check expenditures, we also need to, um, check revenues, and also balance revenues when our revenues are too high. And so, um, I would like to try to start maybe putting together a few budget workshops, um, we can open public, whatever, I don't know if they would need to be, um, because we'd be discussing things, but, um, we would need to have, um
Have y'all always had the, the whole board participate in the workshops, have you done, okay?
Just supervisors, if I may speak for them, they would prefer to start out working on their own budgets and then include y'all.
That's, that, and that's, that's what I would like to them, to go ahead and start working on it, and then that way we can get involved, cause I don't I do not wanna get involved at the last minute, and that's what happened last year.
Yeah.
I got involved at the last minute, I wanna get, it's January, it's February soon, we're gonna vote on this in June. Um, I would, I'd like to start on this, um, no later than March, if we can start earlier.
Okay, is there something?
Anyway, um, but, um
Well, now, supervisors, I think we talked about starting in February with y'all, is that what we last talked about? So would it be okay for them to get a head start on you, kinda have their things lined up, then to take a look?
It's not to get pressure or anything on you, it's just so that we're more efficient with it. Um, I think we, it's not a win lose situation, I think, that's the way it's always put, I think we can win with the taxpayers, win with your departments, win all the way around the board.
And they, they might beg to disagree with you, they, they're pretty efficient with what they do with their budgets.
If I finish, Mayor, thank you. Um, I think it, I think it can be a, a win situation for everybody, it's just having that transparency, where we're all talking, we all see the numbers, we all got time to not necessarily make a decision right there when you present the numbers to us, but go back home, study, research, figure out, you know, be able to come back to you all, ask questions, um, cause I, I really think, I mean, we got a lot of great things going for us in the city, and, and it's, it'd be better for us to take advantage of it, um, get y'all taken care of, get the taxpayer taken care of, and, and continue, continue keeping a great rainy day fund, so, um, but I'd like to, I don't know how we're gonna proceed with this, but I'd like to try to, uh, maybe by next meeting, schedule something for March.
If, if, cause we'll be talking about this in a supervisor meeting, if we can schedule what time y'all would like to get started, and then if that's okay, then we can bring what they come up with to y'all, is that okay with everybody? Is that kinda what you're
Well, we have a meeting in the morning, so we can discuss.
Yeah, so they have a meeting, supervisors, a meeting in the morning, we'll talk about when you would like to start your budget workshops, and then if that's okay with y'all, then we'll parallel somehow on top of that after they, they have theirs set up.
Yeah, and what, procedurally, what I'd suggest is just call a workshop, there are work sessions, and more members can show up, and just advertise it, you know, as far in advance as you can, uh, even though you may not be actually voting on anything at that matter. If more than one council member's gonna be here to talk about it, just go ahead and notice it.
Yeah.
Are you talking about for their meeting right now?
I'm talking about for any meetings that the council members are gonna participate in.
Any workshops.
Any workshops.
Supervisors are just gonna kinda talk among themselves tomorrow, so
Right, so you don't worry about
Yeah, yeah, that's not gonna be us, yeah. They gotta give us a foundation.
Okay, great, so we'll move forward with that, once the supervisors have something on paper that we can look at, is that okay?
Yep, so I'll bring it up at the next meeting to, I'll, I'll request on the February meeting that we schedule a workshop.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, the next is password issue moving forward.
Okay, so what I think that we need to have as far as security for our city, just based on some recent events, is we need to have a log on when someone, when any employee or any council member or anybody accesses information, we log in, a check in time, we log out, and you have a second set of eyes to make sure that that, nothing disappears, if that, if that makes sense, so, um, that's pretty standard operating procedure in most governments, if you're checking something out, not one person has access to a filing cabinet, just one key, but there's two people that are typically involved.
Well, that is kind of what we have now, I mean, there's, are you talking about within the city or within?
I'm talking about within the city, yes.
Okay, because I'm not sure that the council would have access to keys for the city, or is that what you're saying?
I'm talking about should, should either a council member, or should you go access a file? We would sign, you would sign, I'm pulling out filed requests here at this time on this date, and then I'm returning it, and then someone's there to audit to make sure that everything was returned, what was taken out.
Okay, so that would be for anybody, for anything we do, any, any, you're talking about if they
I would, I would like for the attorney to look into a, a procedure for that.
Yeah.
Um, because there has been issues that have been brought up by several people that there, that there has been tampering, and I want to, this prevents tampering.
Well, I don't believe that's been substantiated, but we'll, we'll see about that.
Well, well, it doesn't, if it's completely false, it's a good safeguards for anyone
Yeah, yeah, it's a good safeguard.
It's a great safeguard.
Well, we, just so you know, there are internal controls policy for what happens within, that's already set up, what happens within, like how money's supposed to be, how, how money's just taken out.
Can you show us a, um, standard operating procedure file on?
We have the internal control, control policies, yeah.
If I finish my question, can you show us a standard operating procedure on when you check, uh, if you were to go in and check something out?
Well, I normally don't, it's the ladies here that do most of that.
I'd like to see the standard operating procedure, if you've already had
We have internal control policy, that's what it's called.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, we can get you a copy then.
Can I ask, I just wanna ask a question.
Absolutely.
Are you talking about like accessing the vault?
I'm talking about accessing paperwork, uh, that's especially if it's, if it's sensitive paperwork, if it has to do with the city.
I'm not aware of any type of policy that we have.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know that, I mean
Well, there is internal control.
Well, the internal, yeah, the internal controls policy, kinda the model policy, may have some
But we work on that.
The only issue that I see for that is, most of the time you're dual control, and I understand dual control, but you have a lot more people. There's some days there's a dual employee here.
Yeah.
So that gets kinda sticky, but if you're wanting dual control on like accessing the vault, I mean, it, it's gonna get hairy.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I'm not, this is why I'm asking, I, I'm bringing this situation up for everyone to discuss. Cause I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I do think a log is necessary. Um, just because there, again, like I said, not nothing substantiated, but there's been accusations of paperwork being taken and not returned, and it's disappeared. And, uh, it's very important, especially for passwords, things like that, we need to have backups, and we need to have logs, and we need to have a audit trail, just as we spend money, we can audit and find out where money was spent, we need to be able to audit.
May I interject that, that if there has been paperwork missing, we need to know about that, and we've sent out a memorandum to several people, and they never come back saying anything's missing.
So you would be, you'd be in favor of having a law, an audit log?
Well, I'm just saying, we wanna protect whatever we have, but, but your assumption that paper is missing, no one else has substantiated that, cause we've asked several times, we've sent emails and memorandums, please let us know what's missing.
Would you agree that we wanna keep that information safe?
Yes, but I'm just saying, what your, what your, your assumption has not been verified, because no one has come back specifically to say
I've, I've, I've left the assumption completely alone several times, you keep bringing it back up, so I'm gonna let, I'm gonna go ahead and just
Okay.
Let's, let's say nothing's ever happened ever before, ever, ever before in the history of
No, I'm not saying that at all.
If it hasn't, let's get ahead of it, and let's put an internal control in there.
So what are you suggesting specifically, we have internal control policy, we'll show you that policy. It, it basically says that we have a backup to anyone who's stealing money, that there's somebody
I'm asking for that policy, the internal control policy you're speaking with, I'd like to see it in writing.
Well, I'll give you what we have right now, it's
Perfect, um, if you can provide that to the whole council, and then I'd like to
Again, that was done before I got here, so it has some improvement that can be done to it, okay?
I think that's kinda what Cole's saying.
That's what, exactly what I'm doing. I think we're, I think we're on the same team here, we don't want tam, we don't want anything tampered with, right, Mayor?
I don't either.
Okay, perfect, so I think we're all on the same page here.
I make a motion, we move on to the next item.
Yes, that's a good idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, um, charter amendments, Mr. Evil.
Um, charter amendments, so I made this for everybody, just in case you didn't have it. Um, and we spoke about this at, um, in our last meeting. Um, these are just the different forms of government, um, on amending our charter, um, CTAS is off, or not CTAS, sorry, MTAS has offered to help us with it, um, as far as amending our charter, um
Can we see that, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry, here you go. Um, and this comes from the MTAS training got, um, manual that we have.
Uh, well, that's, do you have that one?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I don't.
I'm sorry.
And I don't think I have that, that one.
Wrong layer.
I think that
They're, they're all basically in this, um, oh, hang on, I apologize, I'm supposed to pass one of these out to each.
That's what I was thinking.
Just go back to each.
No, that goes around, and then you
Yeah, just take, just take, just take one pass, yeah, I'm so sorry.
And then that, the strong needs to be passed around one by one.
Yeah, it's consolidated, so I apologize, take one and pass, that's what I meant to do, so we need to have Yeah, just wanna be chip, um, and I think it'll be good to have MTAS, um, involved in this, um, and this isn't anything you need to read right now, cause I'm not suggesting we make any decision. I'm not suggesting we make any decisions right now, I'm just suggesting that we look at this and look, and look at how we can amend our charter, cause we're gonna need to do that pretty soon, we're needing to wanna get with, uh, MTAS on it as well.
This is something that's gonna take quite a bit of time for us to study.
That's exact, yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna get at, um, the way MTAS kind of implied, uh, Mr. Jacob kinda implied, oh, we
I don't have the strong.
Cole, I'm sorry, how many pages are
I mean, there should be about s- five or six forms in here.
Oh, like packets?
Here's what I have.
Oh, good boy.
But I don't have the one that said the strong.
There should be weak mayor, strong mayor, consolidated, council admin, council, um, um Commission, yeah.
So where, where are these from?
That, the source all night is from that, um, the training, yeah. I apologize, I messed this up.
No, I've got consolidated.
I thought, I thought I had paper clipped in per person, and I paper clipped them per thing, so I'm sorry.
Do you have strong?
So, all of you who've trained, that's in your manual, she's gone through the
Okay. I'll get y'all, yeah, I'll get y'all whatever's missing on that, I apologize.
Look under there and see if that's the stack that is strong, okay.
We'll figure it out.
There we go, there we go.
There's the one, whole thing, okay. Um, but the point being that, um, which I agree with you, Councilman Petty, is, um, I don't think this is as quick of a fix as, um, MTAS said it would be, while I think we can take a lot of their recommendations, um
Yeah, he made it sound like, 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 I did once.
Yeah, so I, I was just wanting to bring this up, so the council can study, um, how they feel, you know, we can move forward as a city, um, uh, to put
If the mayor, we, we, Mr. Jacob has had extensive conversations about this, and he said if we were to do this, we need to look at our whole charter, not just cherry pick pieces here and there, we sit down, like we learned, you know, when he came to talk to us, we look at the whole charter.
That's not the way I understood it last, last meeting that he was here.
Well, I think he says you're gonna, cause it's gotta go through the legislature, so let's sit down and look at everything.
Now, he said MTAS would look at certain things that we need to correct in our charter, one at a time, because it's too massive to try to do it all at once, and that's pretty much exactly what he said.
And I, just to acc- accelerate the conversation, all I wanna do is bring this before everybody And I, just to acc- accelerate the conversation, all I wanna do is bring this before everybody, put it out there in public, and known in front of everybody that w- we can, we need to probably go back, study, form our opinions, and then bring them to the table, um, at the next meeting. Um, because if we are going to do anything, we're not rushed, but we are under a little bit of a deadline. And if we don't hit that deadline, then we're gonna have to spend about a year to do it, but this will put a little bit more, um, instead of having all these gray areas where there's been miscommunication happening, we can basically, um, take and make, put, put areas, let people stay in their lanes, this is your lane, this is what you're supposed to do in this lane, that's what you're supposed to do in this lane, and not intersect.
Well, we have, um, M T A S recommendations at the next meeting, because that's what I was looking forward to, what you said.
Invite Mr. Jacob to come and talk to us, if that's okay at the next meeting, we make sure we're on the same page as far as M T A S is involved.
I think that'd be excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, and what, I don't know if they still do, what they used to do is they would schedule a special workshop, and sometimes even a series of workshops if they wanted to get public input. Um, now, I was surprised at what he said at the last meeting that implied that he thought he could get done this legislative session. And he may have been, the same, what he may have been talking about, maybe we can make a couple quick changes this year.
Yeah, but not solid.
No, they, he, he, he made clear that it's gonna take a process of time to do all of the corrections that they've already identified that we need to do.
But I, I think, I mean, again, I think this is good to have everybody thinking about it, I think probably what I would suggest the next step would be to get a time with him for a workshop, let you guys ask him questions, and kind of get some more direction from him.
Right.
Um, and, and then maybe reach out to your legislative representative, and, and just ask them, say, can we get a bill for this, this year as out of possibility, and then you'll know if you've got urgent, um, if you got a chance to get something done, you can speed it up.
And that's where I think we should definitely, there might be a couple items we need to do urgently, but I think the rest of it, we can, we need to do our due diligence and spread it out. Um, just to ma, just to, um, have safeguards, but also get a lot more public input on it, so.
So, if I'm hearing, we'll invite Mr. Jacob to come next time, and then we can schedule if he wants to have some meeting.
Yeah, or, I guess I would defer to him to see what his schedule is and what he would prefer, but knowing it, it may be a longer meeting just to talk about that one issue, so.
So, would it be preferable to have him coming, let's just do a workshop about this, would you prefer that?
I would prefer that.
I would do.
Okay.
See what his schedule is, and we can talk about that then.
He, he has said he, this is something he has wanted to have done for a while, so I think, I know he'll be open to it.
We still have things in there about you can't spit on the street or stuff, I mean, it's, it's pretty arcane.
I don't have anything else on that, so.
Let's move on.
Okay, all right, pers- personnel memo.
I'm gonna pass this back out, um, I passed this back out last February, um, I wanted to put another memo out there. Um, because I think hopefully this makes a little bit more sense to the council of why I put this out there. Yeah, they're passing it around here. Um, and if I could read this without being interrupted, that'd be great. Um, all city council members, being the legislative body of the City of Carthage, are permitted to obtain any information from any city department or city department employee without permission or filtration of information from the executive body of the City of Carthage. As the legislative body, it is our duty to inspect that the wishes of the body are being carried out properly by the executive body. The legislative body approves funding for these departments, and therefore must have direct access to these departments. No employees should re, should fear reprisal from any member of the legislative body or executive body for sharing information, facts, or opinions, and feel comfortable answering any questions asked of them. And I really feel this is a very appropriate memo, it's a memo, it doesn't necessarily have any teeth, but it lets people know that our employees, that they shouldn't fear reprisal, and that it is our job to be taking care of our employees. It is our job to be looking at operations, because we are funding it, so I just wanted a motion that we approve this memo, and that this goes out to every employee in the, uh, in the city, being full and part-time, and that would be my motion.
Did we not decide though, before, that we already have something similar to this in place?
We do.
And that's why we didn't vote on it the last time.
Exactly.
Well, again, we saw what just happened, so we can.
One thing to have this memo is know that to make sure we can implement it.
Yeah.
We can vote to do this every meeting, but until we come up with ways to implement it or enforce it, uh, we're just wasting our time.
And I, I understand that, um, this is a communication to employees, I just, I had a lot, I had a lot of employees talk to me, basically, about that fear of reprisal, about, um, feeling uncomfortable, uh, giving information to council members.
I mean, I mean, it might be a good idea to, I mean, double check with our employees how they feel about what you're saying, too. I just don't know, um, if, if they feel like their privacy from having someone come, I mean, there's two, two sides to that story, so. Uh, I know, some, some have even said they would prefer. I just think maybe we need to hear from the employees.
It's our duty as a council to look after our employees and make sure our employees feel comfortable, and it's our duty to be checking on operations of the city to make sure that they are being, things that we ask to be executed are being executed, and not falling by the wayside, that is our duty.
The flip side of that is, do they feel uncomfortable about what you're suggesting? So, you know, there's, I don't know that all the employees have had a chance to.
I didn't necessarily get elected to be, make people feel comfortable, I got elected to look after employees, look after the city, and look after the taxpayer.
If you're looking after the employee, don't you need to check with them that that's how they wanna be looked after?
Again, I would like to not have my infiltration, my information filtered by the executive body, I would like to go straight to the employee.
Second to Mr. Evil's, Councilman Evil's motion.
Well, it goes back to what Barbara's stating, I thought we already have this in place, don't we?
Okay, so there's.
I don't, I haven't.
Barbara?
I have not seen an SOP on this being in place.
The last time.
So, what I would say to Councilwoman Knappel is, if you can show me where this is already in place, I'll withdraw my motion. But I have yet, still yet to see where this is in place, so in, in the meantime, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and introduce this memo.
Is there a second?
I wanna know, how, how could we enforce it, I guess, does that make sense? Like, I don't have a problem with any of it at all, I just, I, I feel like Sam's right, though, too, like we gotta have a way to. I, I think at this point, I don't know what the, I don't know what the enforcement part of it is either, so.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think Sam's wrong on this either, or you on this, um, there's not much way to enforce this until we get into that charter. But this also communicates, this is a communication.
Okay, you wrote this?
Yes.
Did you write this?
Yes.
You're asking us to go by your word, uh, if we vote on this?
I, I'm asking that this just, this, that this goes to all the employees, they see it.
That's your words, this is your words.
Yes, sir.
Not our words, not necessarily our words.
Well, be, it would, it'd become ours, that's why, that's why I wrote it.
I just don't think we can do away with, I like what you're saying, we should, they should be protected, but I don't know that we can ever enforce no employee should fear reprisal from any member of legislative, I mean, we would hope that they would never feel that way, um, fearful, but I don't think that that's something we can enforce, it's a great.
It, it looks like.
It's a good idea.
It looks like you wrote this, and I don't mean to keep going back to this, but it looks like you wrote this, and you're asking us to go by your word. Every word in here, if we, if we vote and vote yes on this, we're voting that everything is said here, we have to enforce. And you're not.
It's, it's not, again, it's, I'm not, I'm not asking for any enforcement that, at all, there's no, there's no, uh.
Yeah, but I, these are your words, not my words.
Actually, do we have it?
Does this go in a policy, does this, does this go in the charter, does?
No, it does.
Where do we?
It should be written by all of us, not by you, in particular.
Hey, listen, I'm.
If I may say, I think that.
Bring some to the table.
The employees need to have input to this also.
I agree.
And, so if, either we have a second and it goes forward, or we don't have a second and it dies, so do I hear a second?
And again, I wrote this almost a year ago.
I mean, I think it goes without saying that they should not fear reprisal.
I'm not trying to make, uh, I'm not trying to make this my words. I, I, I could care, I could care less whose words these are, they don't have to be anyone's words. I want the, I want employees to feel that they can share information, and I don't want my information um, messed with by the executive branch, I don't want it to, I don't want there to be intimidation, which were multiple sources that happened. Not just in this administration.
Understand it, I, I feel like that you're trying to run this show, I mean, you're trying to run what, what's going on out there by your words, and I don't agree.
I'll tell you, listen, uh, Councilman Reese, you're, you're.
Do we have a second or not?
Okay, I'm.
Do we have a second on this or not?
Can I fit the motion?
The, the motion was that introduce this memo, and then if I can respond, and then I'm fine. Councilman Reese, I'm, I'm all for you write what you'd like to write on it, I don't care, I, I, it, it doesn't matter to me who writes it. It matters that it happens, so if you wanna write something, I'd welcome you to do it.
Excuse me, without a second, we're really not supposed to be discussing, so do we have a second or not on this? Okay, then it would die for lack of a second, thank you, all right, um. Okay, Spring Street Playground, Councilman Evil.
Yes, uh, there is a goal at the Spring Street Playground. There's typically a basketball goal needs to be about this way, and it's pointed up about like that angle. I just asked that that get fixed, there's also a hole, um, that needs to be filled in with some dirt.
Where's the hole?
It's right near the east, I think it's the east side of the basketball goal.
You're talking about a spring, Les, would you address that, please?
You're talking about the spring?
It's a natural spring, we can't fill that up.
Is that, so it's a, it's a spring right there?
That's historic spring.
What do we do?
That's why it's called Spring Street, it's been there for over a hundred years.
That's, yeah, it's Willy, Willy Walton's spring.
Okay, so, is there a way that we can protect, uh, children from falling in it, um, from things going in it?
If it's up around, it's all you can.
And, and it's, actually, it's just a little pool of water, isn't it?
It's historic.
All it is, is a pool of water where it drains out from the spring down.
I'm bringing a concern for citizens forward on it, so.
Okay, well, before, I, my understanding is before there was some hedges or something around, and that's the only reason that, that were cut down, and that's why suddenly somebody was saying something, so we can put some hedges again, again?
Yeah.
Or whatever.
When they roll back up.
Yeah.
I don't, it's just something that keeps the kids safe, so they're not having to go, it sounded like they have to go in the spring all the time, and, um, you know.
So.
Well, the goal, they broke the post off a couple of years ago.
Uh-huh.
You're talking about the one on this end?
Yeah, the one on this end, right here.
Yeah, they broke it, the whole, all and all, off, off the ground. So we done our best to try to put it up straight as we can get it back up, and that's as good as, you know.
Can we looking, yeah, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not trying to be, but I mean, if I'm playing basketball, and I'm a kid, and, and there's a basketball goal that ain't working right, I'm not gonna go do that, and I'm gonna go do something else, and I, I like a safe place for, you know, the kids to be able to play. Yeah. So, and it's a concern.
I mean, what they did is replace what was vandalized, basically.
We put up another goal down the other day, they tore the goal down a couple of months ago, we put a newer back up, so we're gonna see how long that stays up.
Yeah, and I, I understand it's vandalism, but I don't think that the other kids who aren't vandalizing should suffer from it.
I don't think that, that wasn't necessarily vandalism, I think it was, had been up there a while, and the kids, all the boys jump and grab it. That's just what boys do, so.
Is there any way, I, I don't know, can it be bent or not, Les, I don't know, no.
I doubt if it can, because we welded it back.
Okay.
What's a new pole cost, because I know we had rec, we had offered to buy a backboard. We had offered to buy a new backboard, the spot had, and, and the goals.
I don't know.
Yeah, the backboard is the pole itself.
Yeah, that's what he was saying, it's the pole, I don't remember what the cost of that would be.
Put a new pole in?
That'd be pretty good, hold in.
And it would be concrete and.
I mean, people don't, I mean, we, we can, we can put something up, so, you know, please don't hang on when you're dunking or whatever, you know, but, I mean, still.
They do, and they, we go to the gym at the Methodist Church, and I have to repeatedly remind them, don't, don't jump up and grab the basket, but they just have to show that they can.
So, we can look into maybe, if there's a way to.
Possibly see what it costs to replace the pole.
Yeah, maybe bring back that cost to us, of a pole, maybe we can find a way to do that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
There are a lot of community kids play down there, and it is a great thing.
Okay, so then, Council, Councilman Knappel, Lady Knappel, you said you don't wanna do this?
Yeah, I called, uh, your office and said, let's don't do that right now, um, it's really, for one thing, we just, uh, the council ha, the town has supported us all the years that we've been up there, and so I feel like some of the councilmen maybe don't know what all we offer to the city and to the kids in the county, so at some point, our mentor wanted to come, and he could not be here tonight, so at another time, just because you guys support us, we'd like for you to know what, how we support the council.
Just curious, is it something we might could at the next meeting, maybe prior to the meeting? I don't know if it's ten and fifteen minute or whatever.
Yeah, ten, probably ten minutes.
Could we possibly do it that way?
I'm sorry, do it one day.
Let them come, and for those that want to come see it, and I certainly want to come about ten minutes before the meeting and show it.
Would you like to do that?
Before the meeting starts, let me check with the, uh, mentor that developed that presentation, if he can be here, that sounds good, I mean. And I would hate for him to have waited tonight until eight thirty to do it.
No, no, just before you adjourn, we gotta vote on the, vote on the sign ordinance, we have it in the, uh, second reading, sign ordinance voting.
Oh.
It's before everybody leaves.
Was that on?
It's not on the agenda.
Don't think it's on the agenda.
But was it on, it was on the other agenda?
Yeah, it was, that's what.
It should go forward, it shouldn't?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was on the, if it was on the other one, it was supposed to go forward.
Well, I've got the one from last, this is the one that was printed.
This should be exactly the same agenda.
Is it the same? I didn't see it on there.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Well, yeah, it has.
As long as it get voted on.
Whatever was on the last agenda has to go forward, so the sign, it was just the second reading of the sign.
Yeah, second, second, second final reading.
This is literally the one that was printed.
For January second?
Yes, yeah, and it's the same, this is the one that was printed, it's not, so, it's not that I wanna vote on it, I just wanna make sure it holds up, because you done a lot of repair, because they weren't voted on correctly.
Wait, wait a minute, so.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
I'm not showing it out here.
We've got, we've got a company waiting on that now.
Public hearing, that's the one that was printed.
Well, there was a public hearing last time.
This was, this is the one.
Last time was the City of G.
That's right.
This is the one picked up on January second.
That's right. Well, it should've been on there, it's not bad, it's not on there, was it on our last?
Well, let's see, I think, we're talking about.
The reason it was not on the last one is because we had to have a second reading, I mean, the public hearing. And then we had the public hearing tonight.
But we couldn't add it because it wasn't on the January second, okay.
It wasn't on the, that sign didn't get added, but it was on the other agenda. So we can do it, we can do it the first.
Okay, okay, we can do that.
Okay, so let's make a note, I'm sorry, that's why.
We got a company waiting on this, so.
Yeah, because we had to have the.
Oh, no, no, we wouldn't want to do it right, yeah, we wouldn't do it right.
We couldn't put it on the agenda. So, just, so we're clear, we couldn't put it on the gym last time, because we had to have a public hearing, and they had to have fifteen days or whatever it was. So, because it wasn't on that one, we had to only move forward with what we had, so just, there's no confusion, okay, all right.
All right, we need to set a time that, um, the spot is gonna come next month.
Oh, do you want to come, is it a?
She gotta check first.